Somebody's not.
Be the whole purpose of budget for Thursday, December 2nd. Yeah, Council Hughes is here, so we are 100% attendance with Council Hughes, virtual. We have two registered speakers today, Curtis Cowell regarding the annual flower planting and then Darlene Malenko for the transit. So is Curtis and Darlene with us?
Yes, they are now hearing.
All right, I have Curtis at the top of my list. So Curtis, you want to turn on your camera?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Thanks for joining us. You have five minutes. You can start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. I just want to speak with you guys today about an item that came up in the proposed budget. Was the removal of the budget to plant flowers. And I just wanted to remind council that this is the Botanical City. I think it's a pretty bold move to just say that we're not going to plant flowers in the Botanical City. And I'd like you guys to really, really reconsider that position on that contract.
Excellent. All right. Well, I did put forward a motion to reintroduce it back into the budget. Is this still unconscented that that one get pulled? It's pulled. Okay, so we will be debating it, but hopefully we will be able to introduce, reintroduce it. Do you care if they're pink?
Yes, most certainly.
I have seen that debate online, but you know, flowers of any color is better than no flowers at all. Okay.
That's, that's for sure. But I think we could definitely look at that contract and scrutinize it a little bit and hopefully come up with something better than we've done in the past. Again, I remind you guys, this is the Botanical City. Let's try and make it look better. Let's do better. And that's what I ask of you guys.
Perfect. Any questions, Mr. Cowell? All right, seeing none. Thanks for joining us. We'll probably get to that one. It might be a while. We'll let you know how the vote turns out. Now we have Darlene Malenko wants to talking about the transit budget. Darlene, I did see you. There you are. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Okay, so good afternoon, Mayor Herron and herron and councillors. I am Darlene Malenko from the Amalgamated Transit Union Local 569. And I want to thank you for taking the time to hear from us about the proposed cuts to transit in the 2022 budget. Specifically converting the current fixed route service on Saturdays to a bus on demand service. Elimin and elimination of the shuttle buses for the farmer's market and other community events. Last week, I sent you all an email detailing the issues with the bus on demand service. It would be hard to argue that transportation and transit in particular are not a backbone of a modern, of modern city building. As we move towards a regional transit system, we need to show that we value and strengthen our local service as it is the core of a regional system. The top three priorities in our own St. Albert strategic plan are growth, economic development, and building a transportation network. And further down on the list is the environment. These all fit in with, with transit service. Some may believe that with reduced ridership that we are experiencing that cuts are necessary. But we, we need to build ridership. Bus on demand discourages and limits it and limits ridership. A robust and vibrant city needs a robust and vibrant transit system. When deciding where to buy a home or raise a family, transit's a consideration. If we want young people to move or stay in St. Albert, we need a strong and viable transit system to attract them. Bus on demand service model starves our system. If we expect ridership to recover in advance, we need to provide an accessible, convenient, fast, and comprehensive service to our residents. The fixed route service is the only model that achieves that. The shuttles are so important. Shuttles are next. The shuttles are so important to our residents. They're extremely busy and bring economic value to our city. The farmer's market is a flagship of our city. Our own residents and many other residents come from all around the region to our outdoor farmer's market and other community events. And it's a way to showcase our city and our business district, attracting business and growth. The shuttles are integral to facilitate this. Now, the residents of St. Albert are mostly unaware of these proposed cuts, but their silence doesn't mean that they agree. I mean, I've talked to many people on the on transit and they, they're, they're appalled actually when they see these service cuts. Service, because the service cuts at that level affect them the most. And in many ways, ATU sees itself as a partner with the city in these issues. It's unfair and unreasonable that municipalities are left on their own to pay the entire cost of the municipal transit system. Every single modern city in the, in the country has a transit system that they operate to the benefit of the entire country. So why then does our, does our federal government partner with municipalities to help with the costs of the operation? It's no help to buy buses and LRT systems if we can't operate them. ATU Canada continues to apply pressure on to Ottawa to get transit operational funding in place. I urge you all to vote against these proposed cuts and keep transit moving and improving. But thank you for considering this important matter. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, darling. I do believe there is a motion to bring that service level back up. Is there any questions from this Michael?
I have a question for you guys, but I can wait. No question.
Oh, you have one minute left in your presentation, so go ahead.
Okay, one, okay, I guess my question is, so the cuts that are proposed for the, to bust it to make it bus on demand to convert it are from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And bus on demand now currently starts at, at 6:30. So there's a two hour gap in there. So I'm just wondering what kind of coverage or what, what is, I don't understand that, that cut. So, or where it starts and begins.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that anyone on council can answer that. When we get to that motion later on tonight, we'll, we'll ask our staff that question.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I could watch that, right? That's.
Absolutely. Well, this whole thing is on YouTube, right?
Thank you.
It is. Thank you for joining us. All right, let's get into it, council. So we do have a consent agenda in front of us with most pulled off. So does anyone want to move the remaining? Thank you, Council Jolly. So I'm just, oh, here we go. I'll just, all right, are you ready?
Yes, it's, it's, yeah, it's in your motion in progress.
Yeah, okay.
So that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. 7.1 PM 22004 freeways. 7.3 PM 2022006 indigenous program funding. 7.7 PM 229 public toilets at outdoor recreation and parks funding. 7.14 PM 2218 artist mentorship program subsidy. 7.18 PM 2224 budget world cafe events.
Excellent. All right, call for the vote.
Herron, do you want me just to put it in the chat?
How would you like council? In the chat is what they're saying.
Mayor, I'm just trying to find the chat right now. Don't ask me why. This is getting confusing. I'll just raise my hand for now and I'll figure it with.
Yes. All right, that motion passes unanimously. All right, there's five done. Can we see the tax meter? I'm kidding. All right. For any, for Council Kilik and Council Bermansky's information. It used to be a kind of an exciting thing to see the tax meter. And I, it's kind of lost its, I don't know, its attraction. It just shows where we start and after debate. Diane's whole team is vigorously putting things into the spreadsheets and it shows, but we'll wait to the very end. I don't think there's any. I don't like decisions being made on tax increases. Decisions should be made on the basis of each motion, so. Let's go into it. So the very first thing we're going to be debating is utility capital 4.1. So this is a waste energy funds. It is moved by Council Hughes. So Council Hughes, why don't you read the motion? Then I'll open it up for questions.
The pilot scale waste to energy project be closed and the unused funds be uncommitted within the reserve.
Excellent. Right before I accept that, is there any questions? I'll start Diane's question for you. Her motion says return to the capital reserve, but your backgrounder says it was taken out of stabilization. So if this passes, are we essentially transferring a million dollars from stabilization over to the capital reserve?
I believe the motion just said, she says return to the reserve, so it'll just go back to where it came from.
I gave them.
She gave a revised motion from originally, sorry. So yeah, that's from what was put up. It's slightly reverted.
Okay, perfect. All right, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to administration. Great backgrounder. There's a statement here that says. All right, as a result of policy work by the MRB under the solid waste collective and recent discussions among municipalities, there has been renewed interest in the past from regional partners in possibly participating in the pilot program. Can you maybe just, can you expand on that? Like, I mean, renewed distress is that like, we're coming to the table with money here or?
Through the chair. So it was, it hasn't been discussed fulsomely. It was, it actually came up at the last EMRB CAO's meeting as an agenda item on solid waste in general and waste, waste energy was a part of that discussion. So the outcome of that was that the CAOs would go away and have a meeting to discuss it further with the renewed interest. As per the background, there are meetings happening on December 21st.
Yeah, I was just trying to gauge whether or not there was, you know, likelihood of continuing on. I don't want to pull it prematurely. That's my point. So anyway, thank you for that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Mackay.
Just to follow up in relation to Council Broadhead's inquiry. So right now, the backgrounder and I agree with Council Broadhead's, it was beneficial and I appreciate it. And I'm also on the MRSP and there was a lot of renewed interest in the region. I guess it just goes to the fact that we've currently spent approximately $56,000 doing design and permitting along with the City of Edmonton as a primary partner. I guess what would be the concern then if we just sort of funded it as we went along? Like, I mean, if the million dollars went back into the reserve and as we needed it, we would take funds out of the stabilization. I realize it would be onerous and it would probably have to keep coming back to council. But what's, are there any other barriers to doing it in, in that manner? In the sense of putting a million dollars back and then coming back, are you coming back to council in relation to that? I'm just, I just want to just that information.
Through the chair, I may defer the answer further for elaboration on this, but there is some, you know, some contractual work being done. And as I understand, it's really just at that design stage and the site permitting and the site prep. But if you were, you know, if, if the project was to go to that next steps, there's the, the actual technology from the vendor and there's, you know, I guess the, per the terms of the contractors, you know, costs incurred for that next stage. So I may defer to Reagan or David. I'm not as familiar with the contract as it currently is.
So my understanding through the chair, my understanding is that we do not actually have any contracts in place now for this work.
So what was the kind of arrangement with FCM? Would they be part of that funder?
We're still waiting to hear back from FCM.
So right now, I mean, the, the million dollars out of the reserve was conditional upon the 75% funding from our other sources. So we're not really at risk of losing a million dollars unless we get that 75%.
No, there would have to be those commitments made, whether it's from regional partners or grants or, or other partners in the project.
So there's, I mean, other than the fact that we don't have that million dollars potentially coming back or slightly under a million, excuse me, a million dollars coming back in the reserve. I mean, there's really no, it can sit there and be available for the project that it was approved for originally, right?
That's correct.
Ms. McMorty, what's our, what's the current balance of the stabilization reserve? Do you know?
If you can give me a minute, I'll look it up.
Maybe a better question would be, has a request to withdraw from the stabilization reserve not been? Allowed is not the right, have we run into a problem of not having enough money in the stabilization reserve because we've got one million dollars committed?
No, I mean, I wouldn't say that's a problem at this point. We have, you know, adequate dollars in the reserve. A lot of it being still coming from the transfer funding that we got from the province related to COVID. So that's why our balance is as high as it is.
Okay.
And we do potentially have several motions on the floor during this budget process that are potentially coming out of the stabilization fund as well.
Would it deplete the stabilization fund and we would need them? I'm just wondering if we need this million dollars for something else right now?
I would say not at this time. I mean, it's already been committed, so it's not even showing in our balances right now. We've, we've sort of have it set aside for the specific project.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Council Kilik.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to clarify that this is a pilot project. And as such, in Edmonton, it would be, a pilot project is very difficult to get other levels of funding to be engaged in it because when it moves past the pilot project, it, it actually has to move to a new location or, or into a more production type facility. So my sense is that as long as it's a pilot project, we're having trouble attracting other sources of funding and in fact, federal or provincial funding. And just like to clarify that that may be an obstacle in actually moving this forward. We can continue to have the conversations with the other CAOs, but I think they may feel that looking at a pilot is, it makes it difficult for them to, to commit any resources from their municipalities as well. If I could just get clarification on that.
Well, first off, I, I don't comment for other CAOs and what their opinions may be. You know, it's meant to look at the pilot scale. The, the outcome of the pilot, if it proceeds, is this, is this a good decision for the region? Is it a good decision for individual municipalities? Is it, you know, is the feasibility there in a centralized approach or of a regional approach? Or a decentralized approach by community? And it's really, you know, to, to collect the data to see if this will work at any level in the region, whether in a small decentralized asset by municipality or a larger collective throughout the region.
All right, I see no more questions. So Council Hughes, I'll accept your motion. Go ahead with your opening statements.
All right, thank you. So there was multiple reasons why I brought this forward, just to say that we should probably put in that money and committing into the capital into the stabilization reserve. I thought it was the capital, so thank you for that clarification this morning. But nonetheless, I don't want to be tying up funds in any reserve when it's not necessary. And when the original motion came for waste to energy to commit these funds, it was with a six month commitment. So the motion said flat out, they had six months to get the funding or it would die on the table. And yet, three years later, it's still on our books. And there's no motion to continue it after that time. So we've actually gone past the date of having council approve them to keep these funds committed in the stabilization reserve. The six months were three years. The second thing is, it seems also that the time of the waste energy pilot was with one specific type of vendor. And it seems also clear that we no longer have a contract with them. And I have no idea what the numbers would be now, three years later. But we have not managed to secure any of the support that be necessary, certainly nowhere near the three quarters of it that we would need to have it done. And so I think that we should just simply the call of spade a shovel here and let it go. That does not mean that we can't continue to look at possible options and have that discussion with the other regional entities. And then if there is an alternative solution, whether it's a different type of waste energy facility or other options, it can be brought forward to council for approval at that time. But it seems clear that what was being brought forward to council three years ago is no longer on the discussion table. And we don't have the funding that was expected. And it's been years since this has been brought forward. And there's been no approval from council to continue. So based on all of that, I just thought, let's just uncommit the funds and realize that the project that was brought forward to council three years ago was not the project that would be happening anyway. And that if we do move forward, we should be moving forward with a council motion based on the new proposal and approving something in its entirety on a different, on a different proposal. And then committing the appropriate level of funding at that time. That's it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any comments? Seeing none. This is a tough one, Council Hughes. Wish, I would honestly, I think I'm going to vote no, just because I want to wait to that December 21st meeting. You know, the backgrounder says if we, if we approve this, then the entire project is shut down and no more work will be done. And I think also for any, there is still the possibility of that one FCM grant. They're looking for more information. And to get an FCM grant, we have to have skin in the game ourselves. So this money is not going to be spent until there's actually something to spend it on. And it's not being needed somewhere else. So I'd rather wait until here what the region thinks. But no, Council Jolly. Sorry, that's all I have, but I'll go to Council Jolly now.
Thank you. And I'll just echo those comments, Mayor Herron. Regional collaboration is critical. And continuing to set aside these funds signals that we're committed to sit at that regional table. And so I'll vote against this, particularly since the funds are not, you know, urgently needed elsewhere. That's all. Thank you.
Council Hughes to close?
I still think that we should be releasing the funds. And I appreciate what saying is that we have this meeting potentially in three weeks' time. But that doesn't stop the conversation from happening. It doesn't stop the conversation from bringing forth a different proposal. But what was approved and what could be moving forward on December 21st are probably two different projects. And I don't think the council should approve one project and then allow it just to continue to morph into something completely different. And, and leave those funds as is. If there's a different project that comes forward, let's approve that. But I don't think that we should be approving projects in one entity and then having completely changes something else over the course of years. And, and having a motion that was supposed to die for six months continue for years. Like, it doesn't, just personally, it's not the way I think that we should be running it, the city. We should be approving specific projects and not just generalized ideas, especially when we're committing a million dollars from any area. That's it. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with, oh, sorry. Councilors Bermansky, Council Hughes and Council Kilik in favor and the rest opposed. I do think, Mr. Scoble, that after that meeting on the 21st, we, we should get an update. And then we could reconsider this again in January, see where we go. All right. That's it for utility capital. Why don't you tell your operating 5.1 was pulled off, which is PM 17 utility budget amendments by Council Hughes. I'll let you read it in and we'll open it up for questions.
Great. That the 2022 utility budget be amended such that the average household would experience a 3.1% increase in rates.
All right, is there anyone have any questions for Council Hughes or staff? Council Mackay, go ahead.
To Ms. McMorty, in relation to this, and I appreciate the backgrounder and I appreciate the initial information in relation to why we are at 4.5. But going forward, so I mean, if we, if we extend the pain out on this one by approving 3.1, is there any, is there any likelihood or can we even gaze ahead that far to anticipate that we'll actually be higher than going into 2024, 2025? That we'll actually need more and that we're not actually spreading the pain out. There's going to be 3.1 if this motion passes and then maybe there could be another 3.1 next year as well. Or is that explained in the background that that won't happen?
I, I believe I can probably add to that a little bit. I mean, you're right, it, it's hard for us to sort of look into the future because as we develop our utility model, a lot of it is based on the water rates that we're being charged through F Corps and through the wastewater commission. We don't know those right now. So the only thing I can say is that next year will be higher than it would have been. If we weren't basically delaying some of this increase into the, into the following year. But it's too early to be able to see what rates would look like next year, depending on what, what those rates can stand out from those supply providers.
All right, thank you. I can tell you the wastewater will go up.
Will go up? Any more questions? Seeing none, Council Hughes, I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Before I start, can I just ask Ms. Morty one question? Hi Diane, do you know, based on the SCC, because this is, a lot of this is based on the fact that we have the SCC increasing. With the SCC, are we expecting a large increase in the SCC next year? Or is it, sometimes it goes down, sometimes it was up. Where, where is the SCC expected to go up or down?
SCC, for those that are watching, is the supplemental capital contribution.
Yeah, and it's, I would say it's almost, almost the same. Yeah, and it's, I would say it's almost the same answer as I had said before because really, the supplemental fee at the end of the day is the shortfall that's created. You know, so basically, the revenue that we're going to get from rates, less the costs we're going to pay in the balance goes towards capital and whatever we're short. So, it really actually also depends on what's happening with the operating cost side of the model as well, whether that SCC fee goes up or down.
Okay, let me reword this. Are there any really big, I'm not going to talk about the operating, I'm just going to say, because we just have the capital costs. And so, obviously, when a really big project comes into year 10 or somewhere in there, then it increases the envelope quite a bit that year. And then, if the next year is not as big, then it will help decrease it, depending on what falls off on year two on the rolling. It's a 10-year rolling average. So, are we expecting another large projects next year in the capital that are higher than average, I guess, is what we're saying?
Right, I understand your question better. I will maybe call on Reagan, and he may not have the answer as well because, of course, like you said, it's going to be the difference between what falls off of year one of the plan that we share and what comes in on year 10. And so, I sort of, as we start working on RMR, that'll be like April of next year. So, I don't know if Reagan has any sense if there's a big project coming in that's bigger than what's going out in year one.
We're aware of the Sturgeon Reservoir, sorry, through the chair. We're aware of the Sturgeon Reservoir reconstruction project, that's a big one. But that's built into our current capital plan right now. And we're working through our UMP updates, both on the water and the sanitary and the storm side. And there are going to be some changes coming out as a result of that, but we're not expecting any big increases. They seem to be pretty much in line with what we had previous, but the project names will be changing.
Okay, I can handle that. Okay, if I can begin then, Mayor Heron, thank you for letting me go through those questions. So, this is not about changing how much money we collect, it's just about softening the blow over the course of two years instead of one because we have a really big project, it sounds like, that just came into our capital plan as of this year. And it's increased the rates even more than before. And what happens with a 10-year rolling is if we have a lot of lesser projects compared to what was just completed, the rates will go down. And the SCC has been going down in recent years. But this year, because of a large project, which I'm assuming is that reservoirs come on base, it's increased it substantially. So, this is just about helping just level it out a little bit. If we're not expecting the SCC to dramatically change next year, then all we're saying is that we're taking 1.4% out of this year and adding it to next year, and then plus whatever the operating costs are going to be. But it'll just help lessen the impact to the average resident and average business. And while, in the end, the city will end up collecting the same amount of money over the And if we're not expecting huge increases in the capital next year, I'm not expecting huge increases, unless it was something that would happen from the operating with the cost of water or something, but it's also outside of our control. What we can control is what we're expecting in capital, and what we are not expecting is large increases in capital. So, just lessening it a little bit, I think, would just help people. You know, a lot of people are struggling right now. And it can just, it's a 1.4, it's just a buck or two, but it's just a buck or two this year that will defer to next year. And we'll still accomplish the same goal, but trying to lessen it this year. And the ultimate motions were offering a 2.7, a 3.1, or keeping it 4.5. And I thought, let's go down the middle. And that way, we're not extending it for a long period of time, but hopefully, just helping it a little bit so that it's not a hard hit.
Anyone else have any comments on debate? Go ahead, Council McKay.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the motion and I don't know what I'm going to do yet. I understand exactly the intent around softening the blow at this time. And I can agree with that. My only concern came out of my question because we deal with our utilities as just strictly cost recovery. And my entire worry will be that next, so we're just bridging and we may get behind. And we'll just always be trying to catch up. And eventually, we're going to have to catch up and it's going to be a big, big hit. And then, even though we're saving money now for residents, they may end up having a bigger impact, not maybe, maybe one year down the road or even two years down the road. So, that's the conundrum I'm in, Council Hughes. I'm just somewhat worried that we're always going to be behind. And eventually, we're going to have to catch up with a bigger cost.
Anyone else? I appreciate the motion, Council Hughes. But I feel like when we start deferring costs, we're creating problems. And we got it, you know, we're faced with this 1.5% levy that we've got on our RMR is because we weren't paying, we weren't storing money for what we needed into the future, and it's causing heartache now. And I want to be the council that is just kicking the can down the road. We're talking about less than $2 a month. And I think the philosophy of cost recovery needs to be adhered to. And when we start thinking about the future, Council McKay joked that the wastewater commission's going up. I think everything's going up. So, next year's not going to be any easier. And then, when Reagan was talking about the UMP being, sorry, the utility master plan being looked at, if this council's responsible enough to start actually building into replacement and upkeep of our utilities, which is storm and sewer, to accommodate for extreme weather, which I think we're going to have to do in the next few years, those costs are going to go up significantly. So, we're just adding pain to future years by not doing it when it's required according to policy. So, I'm going to eat my own $1.86 a month and do it now this year. Nothing further. Council Hughes to close.
Thank you. This is a motion that administration brought forward as an alternate. So, they're not bringing it forward, they would not have brought it forward. Instead, you could have two other choices if they actually expected the rates to dramatically increase next year and have an even higher increase next year. So, I mean, this isn't something I just cooked up. This is something where they're like, this is high, we can just average it. We're not kicking the can down the road for endless years, we're just going to average it over two years. And if next year ends up being a 4.9 because we kicked it down the road, well, then that's what it is, right? I mean, well, then we'll say we did our best we could and next year came in higher because of things outside of our control, like the cost of water. But they have said this is an alternative, just lessen the blow a little bit. And as I said, this is not about not paying it. This is not about not having the funding. They've been clear that if we do this over this period of time, we will. It's a 10-year capital plan, and it's just a way to soften how much the SCC is going up. That's it. So, you know, this is, personally, I don't have a problem with it, and that's what I brought it forward. I thought, sometimes, it's a $1.86 at compounds. And they are confident this is an alternative motion that would be acceptable. And so, if they think it's an acceptable motion and they're not expecting SCC to climb dramatically, then this is just a way to just reduce the amount coming out of the SCC all at once. That's it. So, that's it, thank you.
Sure. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Council Bermansky and Council Hughes in favor. We are on to 5.2, which is the Take It or Leave It event funding, moved by myself. I will read that. The motion is that $15,000 be put back in the Public Works budget for the Take It or Leave It event funded from the tax levy. When there was a question about whether we should change the funding source of this, wasn't there? From to utilities. Where did I read that? Or is that just in my head?
No, you read it.
Yeah. I will change it to utilities, and I apologize that I think I was just getting excited with all my motions. So, yes, let's change it back to utilities. So, I can't remember who pulled this, but whoever has any questions, before we get into debate, go ahead. Okay? So, Jolly, go ahead.
Yeah, I was the one that pulled it. I'm just not convinced I want to vote for it. So, yeah, and I'm happy with the change, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'll move it. Sorry, you're all of a sudden very muffled, Council Hughes.
I don't know why. Okay, I'll get it really fast. Okay. So, when we read in the backgrounder, it sounded, not the background, but the initial recommendation. It sounded, and I think in our discussions, you said that this was not being used as an intention. I just want to remember if I remember it correctly, that people were tending to drop it off for getting a lot of outside-of-the-city people. Is that correct? Am I remembering it wrong? I just can't remember from questions three weeks ago.
Is there somebody from Public Works that can answer that? Jay's here, thanks, Jay.
I can take that through the mayor. Yeah, that is the intention. So, Olivia hasn't managed it for the last couple of years. And what ends up happening is people are dropping and individuals are coming and treating it more like a flea market, et cetera, and collecting, which has led to some frustrations between residents and people coming from other communities and collecting the items. Because there is some, in people's eyes, some valuable items that they want. And so, it's led to some anger and frustrations among groups versus it being a sort of a repurposing of of materials, et cetera. So, they end up taking it and then selling it out of flea market or it's more stuff like that. So, it's led to some frustrations with groups that are a bit more aggressive at trying to take those items that they deem as valuable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Kilik, go ahead.
Thank you. Just from personal experience at the last Take It or Leave It, it was a bit of a gong show, to say the least. Appreciate it, that men had tried to do a staggered drop-off time before there was a, I think it was a two-hour later pickup time. The traffic jam was horrendous. People were approaching vehicles before they had even made it to the drop-off area to grab stuff, literally grab stuff out of the back of people's trucks or cars or whatever. You could clearly see that people had come with large storage trailers to just grab everything they could without any consideration for, did they really need it? It was pretty evident to me that this was kind of a resale opportunity or
Sorry, yeah, we're in questions right now.
Oh. Nope, sorry, I thought we'd gone to
No, that's okay.
My apologies, no questions.
We'll remember when we get to debate. You can finish.
Hopefully, I don't have to repeat all that.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Council Kilik, I think you got it right on Gong Show, pretty much my experience as well. A question, so, how do, out of the community, people get involved here? There's no sort of requirement to show in for residency or anything like that? Or is it just, it appeared to me to be a sort of free-for-all? Is that what's leading to this?
Through the mayor, I can pass this to John Potter, who's our manager of transportation operations and waste management. And he's had some people that have worked it. He can probably give a bit better description of sort of the event itself.
Sure. Through the mayor to Council Broadhead, no, you're quite right, counselor. We did, we would ask the people that were participating in to prove residency. As Council Kilik alluded to already, it's quite a busy day and lots going on. So, in the organized chaos, it becomes, you know, a decision on whether to prove residency or get the people moving through as quickly as possible. But the intent is to provide it for residents of St. Albert only.
Fair enough, thanks. I recognize the difficulty of organizing it, for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council McKay.
Just a question in relation to the backgrounder. And I just want to, I mean, it does identify that this is primarily funded through staff overtime. We have 30 staff there and all the other associated expenses. So, is that a staffing part of the utility operating budget then? Because that's the impact, it says financial implications would be, this would add to the utility operating budget. So, is that where we have salaries in that utility operating?
I think it gets complicated when it comes to public works, doesn't it?
Through the mayor, I know, actually, it is funded through the utility operating, so we do have salaries within there for those members that are actually assigned to utilities. And so, it is funded because it's outside of our regular service hours. We bring people in on overtime to support that event. But it does get tagged back to our utility operating budget.
Okay, I just was curious as well.
All right, I see no more questions. Honestly, guys, didn't think we'd have much to, you know, talk. The reason I put this forward, I was thinking more because I do get asked quite often when it is, people like it. I admit, I haven't been in a couple of years. When you talk about the traffic jam, that means to me, if there's people lined up with stuff to get rid of, that it's, people want to get rid of their stuff. And the other reason I was thinking is for those that live in apartments and stuff that don't have curbs for the curbside pickup, this is their only alternative for taking their big, larger items. So, one way or another, I just want to continue to divert waste away from the landfills, and this is one of those tools. Nothing further. And I see no one else registered. You don't want to finish, Council Kilik? It's okay, Council Broadhead, go ahead. No, it's okay, go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Appreciate your heart, Madam Mayor. There's a number of ways for people to donate within our community. My experience here was similar to Council Kilik's. It was hardly positive when I couldn't get the vehicle open before people were opening it for me and people were fighting for my stuff. And so, and this is not a comment on the staff that were trying to manage it because they had their hands full. Anyway, I just think that there are other ways to, for people to donate back to the community. So, I appreciate your heart here, Madam Mayor. Not sure you have my support on this.
Thank you, Council Kilik.
Yes, I'll just pick up on the, from where my Gong Show ended. I won't repeat the first part. I absolutely agree with Counselor Broadhead that there are other ways to give back to the community. We have two large, one new one as well, large company organizations that people can donate items to if they want to get rid of them or upcycle them to, through other charities. We have smaller charities as well that take goods. We have charities that will phone you and actually offer to come and pick up items. And of course, we have two very large and successful websites. The St. Albert Upcycle website, which is very active. Right now, somebody today is giving away a full leather couch for free. Just come and pick it up. And they have 4,000 members. And the St. Albert Buy and Sell, which many items go on for pennies on the dollar. It has over 40,000 members. So, we have lots of other ways to, that our residents can either dispose of or upcycle or donate to charities. And I think this is a good service that has kind of lived its time. And residents wouldn't really miss it if it was taken out of the budget.
All right, I've got nothing further, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with just lone mayor in support.
And, Mayor? Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, is the intent that this would be taken out of the service-level inventory in the spring, whenever we're doing that?
That's, these are permanent, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, we are now on to postpone motion 32 to the compost facility, which is you, Council Kilik. I'll get you to read your motion in.
City to resume accepting the drop-off by residents of sod and dirt at the compost facility at an estimated cost of $93,000 and adjust the 2022 utility rates accordingly.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions. Any questions? Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. Okay, so I read the backgrounder. It gives me the impression that we can't reopen at this facility because we don't have a permit to do so. So, a couple, two questions is, if this motion passes, then what? And the second Um and the second thing is, how did we accept it before if we didn't have a permit to do it?
Uh through the mayor, I can take that question. Um so uh just so from before, the the materials that were accepted at that time, they weren't actually uh composted materials. Um so they were utilized, that's back when we had the snow facility uh in behind there. And at that time, uh administration had decided to accept those materials to support the berms that were located around the snow facility. Um those were put in there to support um reduce the amount of leaching or not reduce to contain the the uh possible leachate of salt etc. Going into the neighboring properties as well as uh there were a lot of complaints, obviously of sound at that time. So it was a sound mitigation as well to build that that uh that set of berms as high as they could. Um so at that time, um they weren't moving the materials anywhere else or including it as part of a compost materials. It was dropped off and then those that worked there at the time uh would then push it back to the to the snow facility and place it in with the other materials uh that made up a berm. Uh so it wasn't actually part of our permitted uh uh materials that were uh registered with the province, uh which are the uh uh trees, um the uh grass materials and leaves um is what's listed as as compostable materials that we accepted that facility. So if it was able to go through and this became a a service level again, um then we would have to apply to the province just to have that uh uh permit amended. And obviously, if they would not amend the permit, then we'd have to come back to council at that point and inform them um that uh the temporary facility can't and and have to look at alternative measures at that point if there is any. Uh if not, um then at that point, the council could uh decide to uh abstain from that.
Okay, thank you. Um the other question is it didn't didn't say in the background or how much it would affect the rates. Um Diane, do you know how much the rates will go up with this? I don't know what fifty two thousand dollars does to the rate specifically.
It's ninety three thousand, isn't it?
It's a ninety three, sorry, ninety, I was looking at the, okay, it was a landfill, ninety three, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It works out to a twenty five cent a month increase on the organic spot rate.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty five cents?
All right, any more question? Oh, you have a question councillor Killick?
Uh yes, Madam Mayor, through you to uh administration. Could you, uh I'm not clear where we actually compost the grass and leaves and I'm not clear where we actually compost all of the wood waste. Do we use that site as more of a transfer site to drop off? Because I always I always see the the wood waste being ground up and being trucked somewhere. Uh so it's more of a transfer station, but I I don't know where we actually compost the material and it may be just a misnomer of terms. So if if I could.
I think John wants to jump in, Mr Potter?
Through the chair to councillor Killick. Uh yeah, it's uh you're you're quite right councillor, it is a transfer station and their compostable materials go to Rose Ridge uh landfill currently. And they produce compost for us.
Landfill also does composting. They're two.
That's, yep, that's correct.
Our green bins go as well.
That's correct.
We really need to do a tour of Rose Ridge someday. All right, any more questions? All right, councillor Killick, go go ahead councillor McKay.
I I just want clarity from uh councillor Hughes's uh follow up question. Um so right now, I mean, we used to use the um uh material that was no that wasn't suitable for compost to line the uh the snow dump. And that was done on our own initiative. But then uh what you mentioned, Jay, was that if um uh if we made this motion today and approved it, then uh we would have to go back to the province and uh apply for that. And if that didn't come or if that wasn't approved, just with what Mr Potter was saying, would we have to then have like have a temporary site and then transfer it to Rose Ridge as as because it would only be landfill material, it wouldn't be used for anything else. So I'm just, I just need more clarity on what happens if Alberta Environment doesn't approve the permit?
Um through the mayor, so yes, uh so if they don't approve, number one, we'd either have to come back to to administration and say that the province doesn't allow us to utilize that facility. Um utilize that facility to drop off sod and soil. So we could look at an alternate facility, uh roll off bins etc. There might be some alternate ways of doing this outside the compost. Um they may not be as um um easily accessible for residents etc. But we would have to go back to the drawing table and brainstorm some ideas on on how we could accept the materials outside of that location.
All right, I appreciate that. So uh while I have you still on here, so uh who would normally take this type of material? Would it would, does Rose Ridge, does the Edmonton now waste facility take the material currently? We just, you just pay uh a fee, that's right?
Uh through the mayor, that's correct. Um so right now, uh it's it's considered a a landfill material. So it's not utilized in composting or for and the organics are not great for uh for backfill etc. Any of those type of items. So it ends up getting landfilled. Uh the minute the neighboring municipalities uh do not accept other than Edmonton through their eco center or through through their landfill site as well. Um and they charge a a nominal fee. Um every little location has a bit of a different variance. Uh Rose Ridge would accept it as part of a landfill fee. Uh but you have to be obviously registered with Rose Ridge dropping off there. If not, you would go to see.
And because we, when we were accepting this material for the purposes that we were using it for, it was not really seen. We we never kind of looking at the background or we don't even know what how much volume we were actually collecting or utilizing. We don't have a weigh scale. So we're just really eyeballing that number, right? I mean, that we could be out what, how well, how could we be out as much as fifty percent?
Through the mayor, uh that's correct. It's so essentially, we're using anecdotal evidence of of um members who had worked there uh and had been assigned during that period to the the compost facility and to the snow site um of, you know, having to to load up vehicles or through uh loader um loader bucket sizes of how many they would normally move in a day uh to the back and and sort of, so it's it's very anecdotal. Um it's going to be a plus minus at least fifty percent estimate. And then on top of it, it's going to vary based on how many residents are coming in uh utilizing that service.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councillor Killick, another question?
Uh yes, Madam Mayor, uh question around the staffing. My understanding is we currently have staffing there to confirm residents ID uh for drop off of current materials, um whether it be leaves or branches. Um I would we require additional staffing if there were to be there to monitor dirt drop off?
Um uh through the chair, that's correct. So we 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 looked at it of having a a casual there at all times. So right now, we usually typically have one person available. Um and that's while they're doing all duties required of of the facility. So our our checks of of those that uh that enter with during non-busy times, obviously, our our check of those people is a lot more diligent than during really busy times when we're um where the where the group is utilized uh to, you know, move materials, set up barricades, all those types of things. So um because this is uh obviously, we're having to pay uh a larger value to remove this item and and landfill it. Um just from a risk perspective, the intent would have a casual person there that could monitor those those drop offs at all time um and support that person that's doing the other side of the the compost facility as well.
Good. All right, I see no more questions councillor Killick. So I'll let you, I'll accept your motion and you can have opening arguments.
So my um request for this really came about from feedback from residents. Uh and it was heavily discussed on the St Albert Facebook chat pages for many weeks when it was first uh uh when residents were first made aware of it. Um so based on resident feedback, that's what prompted me to bring this forward. It was a service, whether it was an official service or not, that was provided by the city um for many, many, many years. I can't recall exactly how long, but probably at least twenty years um that they were able to drop off uh sod and dirt uh at that facility. The it was a bit of a shock, I think, when people uh realized that they could no longer do that. And uh so the motion was to bring that service level back. Um it is primarily based not on commercial and I sense that there's been some abuse over the years by maybe commercial um landscapers taking large amounts of uh dirt there. But the resident's feedback was really about when they go to plant a tree in their yard and they take maybe a wheelbarrow full of dirt or they want to um trim the sod alongside of their driveway and the city sidewalk uh to keep up the appearance of their yard. And these medium size, I won't say small, because small can easily go in the brown bin and goes in the in the garbage. Um but those medium size amounts, maybe a full wheelbarrow, maybe a couple of three construction uh pails, you know, hundred and fifty pounds or less that could easily fit in the back of your your SUV or small car. They miss that opportunity both during the the summer planting season. They miss it when their new residents are landscaping their yards and they have all the sod cutoffs um that they want to get rid of. Um although I would say that it's interesting to note that St Albert Upcycle, there's often free dirt and free sod available on those sites as well. So residents are trying to uh find innovative ways to get rid of those, but there's still those those amounts that are left over during landscaping of new properties uh or re-landscaping of old properties that uh residents want to be able to uh find an easy and convenient way to get rid of. Um requesting that they drive into Edmonton and drop them off at an eco station uh just compounds the problem of uh adding more greenhouse gas to drive in. Uh and uh often, there's a big long lineup um at the eco stations and it's and they pay for it. They pay extra for it over and above their St Albert taxes. So they pay to drop off um something that previously they had the the privilege of doing at the uh compost transfer station. And um when I looked at the Alberta government definitions of why we have transfer stations, they act, and I'll just quote them here, it says, "They economically transport waste to a different landfill." "They provide convenient drop off location for residents and they reduce traffic volume at landfills." Uh those are three direct quotes from the provincial government guidelines around um composting and and the use of transfer stations. So I think that residents, although they've become aware of it, as noted in the backgrounder, um I I'm not sure that they're happy with it. Awareness and happiness are two totally different things. So I think it's uh an opportunity to help our residents uh return to a level of service that they were used to. Um we already, as has been clarified here today, thank you, um that we already transported our wood chips um and our leaves and grass to Rose Ridge uh site for composting there. Similarly, we could uh add on some additional trucks to take the sod and dirt and and dump it as garbage at uh at Rose Ridge. So I think the the other concern that I have is that um if we allow residents, not allow residents, but if we direct residents to actually put sod and dirt in their brown bin, it could have a negative effect on when we measure how much weight of garbage is being diverted uh from our landfill. And it could actually negatively impact achieving some of our waste reduction uh targets. So when I look at all those things, um and I I see that we have the opportunity over the winter to communicate to residents that this service could be brought back. We could do that through uh Facebook and our own city websites. This is an opportunity, I think, that we have for very little cost. Um and yet great benefit and it fits nicely with our botanical uh art city uh view. So for that reason, um I'm going to be supporting obviously my own uh motion.
Councillor Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm, this is twenty five cents additional per month on the utility bill. Well councillor Killick, you've you've made a compelling argument for this. Certainly, I too heard uh that the residents missed this level of service and the associated cost. I think uh I think our residents would be willing to uh to bear to have this service within our community. Thank you.
Councillor Jolly.
Thank you councillor Broadhead, I'm going to try to get you to change your mind. Um so councillor Killick, I I absolutely have heard the same things from you, is people want somewhere to dump something that goes to the landfill. And I think one of the challenges that we've had in the last few years is is people think that we're diverting waste by recycling. People think we're diverting waste by bringing our sod to a compost facility. And I think um the the challenge with uh starting up a service like this or um restarting up a service like this is it gives the impression that we are diverting waste when we're not. Um the the issues with a abuse of non utility rate payers using the site is also a problem. Is it, you know, I don't want any of our utility rate payers subsidizing um business, for example, for, you know, a spot to bring their waste, because that's what it is. This is waste that's going to the dump. So for that reason, um I I won't be supporting that. And I really do hope that we're able to get the word out that um there are places to take um waste. Um I know, you know, a anyone who lives in the county has their card, they can go and they pay their fees to to allow dumping. Um and that way it is not spread over um the utility rate payers. So, thank you.
Councillor McKay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate, just like uh councillor um Broadhead and uh councillor Killick has identified, I mean, we certainly were all aware initially when uh spring rolled around and dirt that used to be able to be dropped off um was no longer allowed to be dropped off. And we certainly were heard about it from social media, we heard it from it from then non-councillor Killick making some inquiries, I think it was you, yourself, and also um other residents. Although we didn't hear from all of all of the residents and I, you know, councillor Broadhead, you did confirm twenty five cents, but we also had information that we don't have really any data. We could actually be looking at a much bigger rate increase. It could actually be fifty cents. Or I and I'm not saying much higher, but we just don't know. So while I think I could support this motion, but maybe I need way more information than what we currently have. For example, um there's just so much information around, well, we don't even know if we approve it today. And then we we uh assign it out to administration. Administration goes to uh Alberta Environment, Alberta Environment turns us down on that site, that location. What's our what's our direction then? Do we stop or do we then make a then we do we look at going to a landfill, whether in Edmonton, Rose Ridge or a a private uh landfill operator? I I don't know. So I what I I would appreciate it if this motion would have come out of this normal budget process and actually had gone through a regular basically council inquiry and then maybe a notice motion around uh impacting other service levels. Because right now, I'm I I'm just kind of acting on a a whim and a maybe and possible. acting on a whim and a maybe and possible. So I think it's really a, a good opportunity to look at it, and it might be a service that I think is obviously a benefit, because I remember when it used to be over near Poundmaker Road, and I took six yards of my own backyard dirt over there and dumped it off. And I did find it convenient, and I really appreciated having that as a resident. But at the same time, I wasn't, there's, there's other information, I think, that we, we need first going forward. And I just don't think we have that at this particular time. I think if, if it doesn't go forward, I think it's worthy enough to come back and actually ask administration for more of a, more of a detailed impact as to how we could actually provide this service and what it actually truly costs, because we don't have that now. And we're just kind of eyeballing it and putting our finger up in the air, in my opinion. So I, I, I don't think I support this.
Anyone else? Counsel Hughes, you're good?
Counsel Killick, I completely respect your attempt to try to bring back a service level that has been taken away from residents. My problem with it is the service level probably should never have been offered in the first place. And just because it was, doesn't mean it was right. Counsel Jolly's comment of, this is just an example of a, a product, a waste product that ends up in landfill, and there's so many. And we need to find better solutions than having the municipality take it on and have all ratepayers pay for the disposal of one or two people's landfill products. There's, you know, for example, styrofoam was waste, and we found a solution for that. Instead of just, you know, hauling it off to the landfill and letting everybody pay for it. So, you know, there's I, I get it was, it was heightened right when it was taken away, but I think what, what the right course of action is, is to educate people on what to do with that waste. They should be paying for it themselves, not asking all ratepayers to pay for it. They should be reusing their dirt, mix it with compost, it's great in your pots the next year. So I'm having a hard time with spreading this landfill waste over the entire ratepayer base instead of having a user fee or user pay kind of a model, which I would support wholeheartedly. But this is a compost facility, and this is not compost, so I don't think it should be going there. Anything to close?
When we looked at an estimate of 1,000 metric tons, did a little bit of math to try and say, how many people are actually using this facility? And if, if it's 150 pounds per person dropping off, which would be, you know, good-sized wheelbarrow, it would be 100, it would be 15 people per, per ton, and it's 1,000 tons. So that's 15,000 drop-offs over the summer. It, it seems like a, an incredibly high number to say that that, that would be the number of of users. It, I, I think it has to be significantly less, as people said it, it's could be in the size of, you know, 50% plus or minus. So I think everybody recognizes that dirt is, is not going to be composted. There was no, the only mistake we make is that we drop it off at a compost facility. If we were to take it to Edmonton, it goes to the garbage. If we let people know and, and by informing them that it is garbage, that may cut it down even more. But we're actually, our, our website is actually encouraging residents to put it in the garbage. So we, by our own admission, are telling them, this is garbage. And making it easier for them, rather than, again, putting it in the brown bin, filling up their brown bin with it, seems counterintuitive to me. Yes, I agree, it's a service that maybe we shouldn't have given in the first place. But we have, it's well-established. And I think bringing it back and, and continuing to educate people that this is not compost, contrary to the fact that it's dropped off at the compost facility, and maybe we should call it the transfer facility. I think we could still accomplish goals of reduction. And whether, whether we have people take it to Edmonton and put it in the garbage or drop it off at our own location and we truck it to the Rose Ridge as garbage, I think it ends up in the same place. So I, I would encourage counsel to think of it in that view and as a small rate over all ratepayers that may use it from time to time, whether it be in the spring to plant flowers or in the fall to get rid of flowers from, or dirt from their flower pots, et cetera. I think it's still a good, valuable service that we could reintroduce on behalf of all residents. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Go ahead. That motion fails with Counsel Broadhead and Counsel Killick in favor. We are done with utilities. We'll keep going for a bit. We're on to postpone motion 15 under the municipal capital section, which is the Kingswood Boat Dock. Counsel Jolly, I'll get you to read that in.
That rec 73 Kingswood Boat Dock for $182,100 is funded from the Capital Reserve.
All right, any questions on the boat dock? Oh, Counsel Mackay.
Yeah, just to administration. And I was trying to find it, and if I ever think here and I, and I just missed it. What approvals do we have to have in order to, to build this from, or are any approvals required from, whether it's the federal agencies or provincial ones? Are there any, Diane?
To the Chair to Counsel Mackay, yeah, there will be some approvals. We're in, we'll have to look at in terms of the actual location and the kind of dock and what those will look like, but I would ask Amanda Wild if she would like to specifically to what approvals we will need. Amanda, are you on, online?
Yes, thank you, Diane. Through the Chair to Counselor Mackay, at this point, it really depends on the dock solution that we end up going with. The province of Alberta recently passed a new disturbance standard, giving guidelines for docks that do and do not require further dispositions. If we go with one that meets the mooring standard, we wouldn't need any approvals. It would be permitted under the disturbance standard. If we went with a different style of dock, we may need Public Lands Act approval or, and disposition like we have on other docks in the city.
And that usual process is how long, how long?
It depends on the complexity of the application. They can be relatively quick, and I say relatively, because it depends on their backlogs as well. Our recent experience getting Water Act approval, for example, was in the 18-month range. But this should be a much simpler application, depending on the type of dock solution we come to.
And historically, is that location usually, is that locations adequate for a dock, or would we have to build a type of, a special type of dock for that particular location? That would have to maybe go over, I mean, obviously, this was a year that kind of brings me back a few years where we, there was very little water, unfortunately, in our river. But does it go over a lot of sensitive habitat? Would it be, I, I'm just not familiar with the exact location as to where the dock would actually be utilized to go into the river or allow access into the river?
Through the Chair to Counsel Mackay, we did select this site because it is where we see a lot of random access and use for paddling already. It is just kind of kitty corner from the Kingswood parking lot next to an outfall structure. Part of the budget is allocated for an environmental impacts assessment and a hydrological assessment. So looking at if it's in exactly the right space, the least least disturbance. It is an already disturbed area, which is also part of why we chose it, is to using existing disturbed areas is generally a better practice than finding an area that hasn't previously been disturbed from an environmental perspective. So it is kind of in that area, but the hydrological, hydrological study in particular will tell us if the water flows are adequate and in the right spot. Existing use is a pretty good indication that it is a good spot. The paddlers kind of know where it's the best spots to go, but we would confirm that through a hydrological study. And then slightly move the location depending on the results of that study.
Thank you. That provided me the clarity. I appreciate the additional information.
Counsel Brumansky.
Through Mayor to Administration, is it a fixed-type dock you're planning on or one that you, you know, pull back off-season kind of thing? Because I know that a lot of the water spaces request that now, and with your water level raising and lowering, they mostly pull them back in the winter months. I'm not sure what your 182,000, what type of dock it's actually for, or what you've quoted in that. And the, the ones that don't stay fixed are actually better for the environment too. Although people do use different entry places, it does refurbish itself when it's, you know, when it's pulled back over the season.
Through the Chair to Counselor Brumansky, what we're proposing is a seasonal dock with permanent anchors in the shore. So that's, our current one is a wheel-in, at Rotary is a wheel-in fixed-height dock and has some challenges. So what we're proposing to look at is something that City of Edmonton has recommended to us, where the anchors are permanently installed into the shore, but the dock, dock infrastructure itself gets pulled out seasonally. And it would be a floating dock, so it would fluctuate with the water levels.
And I have a second question, if that's okay. The number of people that generally use the area, or predicted amount of people that use the area?
I don't know if we can answer that one.
Can't answer.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, through the Chair, unfortunately, Counsel Brumansky, we don't have any really strong ways to measure use. All we see is the impacts of use, so we do know that it is used readily. We see footprints, we see you know, evidence of people using the site quite frequently, but we do not currently track usage at any of our boat docks.
Thank you.
Counsel Killick.
Thank you, Counselor Brumansky, for asking the question about use after just having the question asked about how many people use sod and soil drop-off. I was going to ask the same very same question, as well as also if we knew how many of those were residents versus non-residents, but I, I, I just here, here we don't have the answer to that question. When I looked at the deferred projects list, it had a very good backgrounder in there, so, so thank you, administration, for that. One of, it did note, as we've just discussed, the types of studies that would be needed to be done, aquatic, marine life, et cetera, et cetera. My question is, how, how can those be done during the winter period to be prepared to start moving the project forward in the timeline that's suggested to have the dock ready for, for summer?
Yeah, through the Chair, to Counsel Killick, thank you for the question. We start with best talk analysis based on existing data and studies that have been done to date. And then once the thought comes out, then we'll do some of the field verification work. The actual development of the dock infrastructure itself is quite, should be a very short timeframe in the matter of weeks, not, not months. So our intention would be to contract out the studies as early as we can, get those done quite early in the season, early, sorry, late May to early June, and then move forward with procurement and installation over the summer. So we'd get, we wouldn't get a full season of use out of the dock this year. Or sorry, in 2022. But the intention would to get at least a few weeks of paddling in, under the project for 2022.
All right, and Counsel Hughes, do you have any questions? Okay, I see no more questions, so Counsel Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you. So over COVID, I think one of the, the values in St. Albert that's become really clear, and I think we knew it prior, is that our residents want to be outside. You go walking down the Red Willow Trail through the summer, and the river has been packed these, these last couple of years, and even prior to, to COVID. When you look at the, the proposed area for the boat dock, Amanda was commenting on how, how you can see how well-used that particular entrance point into the river is. So certainly it's something that we know is already a demand, and so a boat dock would actually protect the environment so that people aren't kind of just trampling the side of the river. I really like the comment about residents versus non-residents as well. I would say certainly a lot of our residents come and use the river, but I think it's also really exciting that we can attract non-residents to St. Albert through our river. I'm, I'm a whitewater kayaker, and we, we actually bring our beginners onto the North Saskatchewan River. And the reason we choose that river is because it's powerful. And the result of that is that I have rescued so many beginners off of the North Saskatchewan, whereas the Sturgeon is a really, really friendly river to paddle. I mean, my kids can paddle the Sturgeon, and I'm, I'm not concerned that they're going to end up, you know, five kilometers downstream when they tip. So it's a really exciting way to attract people to St. Albert. If they want to come paddle the Sturgeon, you know, they can stop over by St. Albert Place, have coffee down by the river. That would be so amazing. So just my comment on, on res versus non-res. And that's really all I have to say. I'm excited about having this built in St. Albert.
Anyone else on debate? Counsel Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I just had a quick question. It came to me afterwards. Is there going to be a lot of parking? How much parking are we providing for this boat dock?
There's a parking lot at the Kingswood, whatever you call it, park there.
Through the Chair to Counsel Hughes, we, the reason why we chose that location as well was because of the parking at Kingswood Park. And then people can also move for the, a little bit further along. There was parking by the Ball Diamonds that they could potentially portage down to, but we feel that there is adequate parking there at Kingswood Park.
So humor me for a minute. So how far are we walking? Like, because I have kayaks. Not everybody's got them on wheels. We're carrying these puppies. So how far is it from the parking lot to the launch then? Because I'm just thinking like the one by Mission, it's not a really long walk. So is it twice as long, are we thinking, or how, how far of a walk is it between the two?
It is not a long walk, but I'll let Amanda, she might actually have the exact distance for you. Amanda, do you have the exact distance from the parking lot to the boat launch area?
Yeah, from where the existing use is in the parking lot, it's approximately 50 meters. Kind of the corner of the parking lot.
150 feet. It's not a minor amount when you're carrying a 25-pound kayak.
I will note, Counsel Hughes, that it is where people are going already, so we do know that there's, you know, that's kind of an existing use. They're parking in the parking lot and portaging in that 50 meters.
Have we had anybody complain about the fact that they don't have a boat launch there since they're using it informally, or are they actually causing damage to the environment? I think that's what you were saying before. Is there damaging it because we haven't got a clear path? Is that what you were saying?
Through the Chair to Counsel Hughes, that's what we're seeing. If you are on that site, we're seeing shore erosion, because it's quite slippery mud. Just the, the type of soil we have around the Sturgeon. So we can see definitely some erosion into the river. We are seeing more invasive species around there in that specific location than we would expect. And that is, we believe, from kind of human use and people coming in and out. And there is a very clear kind of goat path between the parking lot and where people are launching from the shore right now. We don't get any complaints, and I believe it's largely due to the fact that it is an informal launch and people aren't, you know, 100% confident they should be there in the first place. So we have not received any complaints, though.
Okay. Well, Counsel Jolly, I wasn't sure I was going to sit on this, but I'm actually, I'm in a vote in favor of it because I think it's causing environmental issues of having it being used informally. And that's going to be like unintended consequences, I think. It's not a cheap bill by any stretch of the imagination, but if we allow erosion to happen in the river, it's going to have further consequences going forward, especially, and we're not going to stop people from using it. So I think that that's one consideration. And I agree, like, at some point, like at the Mission drop-off, it feels like you're going down rush hour, trying to manage all of the boats. If we can actually put them on two ends of the river, it would really help alleviate some of the congestion that we've been experiencing in recent years on that river by encouraging people to be able to use both sides. So that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Jolly, I too am going to speak in support of your motion here. One of the, to me, one of the value propositions of St. Albert and, and what makes St. Albert so compelling to live is, is just the amenities that we provide our community. And, and we're blessed with a river. Yeah, it's a prairie river and yeah, there's all sorts of things that come along with a prairie river. But gives you an opportunity to paddle a kayak and engage the outdoors and, and our community loves it. And if we can assist that in, in being used appropriately, this is a good thing. Thank you.
I'll be supporting your motion, Counsel Jolly. You know, this is capital project and so yes, we're it's not going to change taxes, but it does, you know, prioritize where we spend our capital dollars. And that's priority setting and signaling to our community that outdoor recreation is important. That was one of the recommendations coming out of the Recovery Task Force was to invest in outdoor recreation coming out of the pandemic and any future pandemics. I live very close to the river. I can see the river from my front driveway. And it was packed in 2020. Like it was, it was a thoroughfare of paddlers. And what, what they would do is they would actually come to that Oakmont Walking Bridge and cludge and go through the goose poop and it's just disgusting. And they're parking on Otter Crescent there. So I'm actually, I think this is a great solution and it was one that we, I had approved last term. So I really want to make sure it's done for the spring. So got my support. Anything to close?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed and that's unanimous. Everyone okay or do need a break? Okay, let's do the next one. According to Counsel Mackay. So this is postponed motion 25, which was moved by Counsel Hughes. Want to read it into the record, Counsel Hughes?
That Plan 010 is postponed to 2024 and the funding returned to Capital Reserve.
All right, before I accept that, any questions of Counsel Hughes or of Administration? Seeing no questions, I accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I'm really not sure if we're trying to solve a problem here that no one's asking to be solved. And so I would think that we, if I try to think of where we should be prioritizing and putting our time and effort into planning and development, when they have so many other things that are currently on their plate. I just don't think that this is really a top priority for me, quite frankly. I don't think that the people in Bayside, Forest Lawn, Sturgeon Heights, Inglewood, Grandin, Mission or Aitkinsdale have been asking to have infill developments and having an overlay for infill. I've, I've actually had no one ever tell me I, I'm really longing for an infill strategy for my neighborhood. And we do have current methods that handle it when it comes to infill and to respect the neighbors. And there's all sorts of rules that are put in place right now. And so I don't see this as an urgent thing that can happen. And $208,000, even if it's come from capital, still a lot of money for something that I haven't had anyone ask to have happen. And while this might be part of a higher, like EMRB's plan to do infill, EMRB is representing EMRB, but it does not necessarily represent the average resident. And I don't, like I said, I've not heard anybody in these neighborhoods. And I'm in one of them that says, let's have an infill strategy. Or as they're calling it, mature revitalization strategy, that, that's basically what we're looking at as an infill strategy. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. So our, our choice is not between infill and no infill. It's whether we want to strategically direct the change in our mature neighborhoods. Right now, our existing process allows for, for infill. And I mean, we know, Counsel Hughes, you and I live in Aitkinsdale. We see what is the result of our current process. But that process right now is unclear. It's frustrating and it's expensive for residents. And it's expensive for St. Albert to administer, which we saw in our backgrounder. So this project would, would create certainty for residents wanting to redevelop while, while prioritizing our values and goals. So maybe we can incentivize redevelopment of, you know, areas that, that could be more welcoming. Just this week, we received an email from a resident wanting to redevelop an area that, that needs redevelopment. And, and looking to give that person direction as, as they, as they do that, we could require the protection of mature trees. Right now, the city, you know, you could bulldoze every single mature tree on your lot. Maybe we can prioritize protecting those healthy trees with a strategy. We don't have that option right now. So really what this project does is, is reduces costs for residents and for the city and puts the community in the driver's seat as we change. And, and that's why Administration has recommended to move forward with this project in 2022 and, and why I am supporting it. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I appreciate the comments all the way around. I too believe that planning for infill is a, is an appropriate work of the city. Back in 2010, when, when we were elected Madam Mayor, I remember the address in question, that was before everybody's mind. I won't mention the address, but I know it. And it was all around the infill not meeting the community's expectation for what was in their, in their area. And just watching infill happen in another communities that, that don't have guidelines for infill and densification and, and all of those things. Without it, it, it becomes a nightmare. So I think the sooner we get to this, the better off we'll be as a community. That's just my thought.
So the motion. Any more comments? We're good. All right. So the motion actually says postpone this project. And whenever we postpone a capital project, it just costs more than the next time it comes back in front of us. It just gets more and more expensive further down the road. It doesn't free up the money unless you unfund the project. So I, I see no reason to delay this. I think actually we should have had this completed last term. I think Counsel Jolly feels the same way and, and maybe we should have pushed it a little bit more because it maybe would have prevented some of the heartache that residents experience when they try to redevelop or when they move into an area and they see something that's coming that they don't agree with. So this is going to have community consultation. It's going to provide direction to make sure that our, that our older neighborhoods in St. Albert don't, what do they call it, decay and die like some other municipalities do. And then schools are empty and you don't get good use of resources and stuff. So I want to make sure those areas such as Grandin, Forest Lawn, Bayside, et cetera, remain really vibrant communities. And this is the strategy that will make it happen. Nothing further. Counsel Hughes to close.
Thank you. I just, I'm not hearing from residents that they're looking for this type of an infill strategy. And my concern is that the individual residents' concerns about we really don't want our neighborhood to dramatically change may not actually be listened to as much as those who want to make the changes. And I just, the reason I said to postpone it was not because it shouldn't happen, but rather that we should actually wait until, or listen to when residents say they actually are looking for this. And I'm not hearing it in droves that they're looking for a change over from their neighborhood to much more of a infill and which basically just means much higher density coming into play. So that's where I thought we should be really tweeting, but hey, that's all I got to say on that.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Counsel Brumansky, Hughes and Mackay in favor. All right, now we can take a break. It's 3:37. We'll just take like a five-minute one. Be back in your chairs by 3:45, a little bit more than five minutes, and then we'll continue on.
Which is the Badger Lands, moved by Council Hughes. So, Council Hughes, I'll get you to read it into the record.
You're ahead of me here. Yes, you can take one more time. The Badger Lands ASP portion of the Plan 006 is postponed to 2023.
All right, any questions before we go into debate? Actually, I have one. I'm not sure, maybe it's Adrian. Yeah, Adrian's there, somebody from planning. So it says here in the backgrounder, Administration believes that the necessary work for the West Area Area Structure Plan in full could be accomplished with their reduced 2022 budget requests of 200,000. So, are you saying you could do it? So right now, I think it's in there for 415. You could do it for 215, or you could do it for 200, and do we need to make a motion? Like, I want to keep the area structure plan in full, but I want to make sure we have the right number in the tenure capital plan. So can you help me out there?
Yes, Mayor Herron. So, again, based on what we kind of, what we've kind of seen as responses to the RFP that's out there right now, and for the initial work and kind of rescoping some of the project, we think that we can bring down the, that final phase from the 415 to 200,000 and complete. That's, that's all inclusive, including the Badger Lands. Obviously, if you take the Badger Lands out, I don't know. That was a tougher number to kind of figure out because we, I don't know how to, how to apportion, you know, like a one-fifth or one-sixth of that land area and how much that would.
The right number in the, in the plan for the full area structure plan. I think Diane wants to jump in. Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor Herron, I just, we were, we were prepared with a motion in the omnibus to correct that to the dollar value down to the 200,000. If this motion fails, we're prepared for that in the omnibus.
Got it. All right. So that's covered off. Any more questions? I saw a lot of people had that question. Everybody's looking at me nodding. Oh, did I? Council Killick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to be clear, when we say Badger Lands and 43 City Annex North, are they one and the same?
Yeah. Yes, Council Killick, so the, the intent would be that the Badger Lands is 43 City Annex. That's the city-owned Badger Lands.
Thank you. Thank you. Just interchangeable terminology that I've got to catch up on, I guess.
It's all good.
The second question is the, it notes that the RFP indicates the following text, and it specifically outlines that it's solar farm, and yet I'm wondering why we would put that text in the RFP when we haven't actually approved it. It seems like we're kind of getting ahead of the process. Already predetermining. Could you clarify why that was in the RFP?
Sure. So, Council Killick, I think I spoke to this during some of the original budget questioning, but essentially, the idea is that we would ensure that there's a concept for solar farm on those lands because that was already something that council had considered. We're not presupposing what, what would occur on those lands, but we wanted to ensure that there was a consideration for solar farm as a known kind of entity to make people aware that that was something to be kind of considering as a, as, as part of the ASP development.
Is that all the questions you had, Council Killick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council Mackay.
Just following up on that, Adrian. I mean, right now, we've got a potential remediation study. So, how are these all connected in relation to the remediation study that's going on to the Badger Lands? Then the ASP usage, or how are we incorporating all of this?
I would say that they're interconnected, definitely, and it depends. I mean, the, the standard of remediation depends on the identified land use. So when we do concept plans and consider what uses the Badger Lands and the other St. Albert West could be used for, I guess, the remediation costs are influenced by whether you're, you know, putting, putting those lands under solar panel arrays, or under industrial or under residential. Those are different standards of remediation, different costs. So we have to, we have to ensure that we're working together and that, you know, that we're, we're kind of speaking to each other and dovetailing the feedback from, from each of those sides of this discussion.
All right. So there's no actual time. I mean, because theoretically, when you're doing an ASP planning around those three uses, potentially, if the remediation comes back with a very high number because it's quite a bit of contamination, then that would, land use would be more directed towards potentially like something like a solar farm versus if it comes back with a, with a lower cost in the, you know, significantly lower, like I believe the low end was 5 million or 9 million. I can't believe, I can't remember, but if it comes back then, then potentially there could be some other uses for that land other than just solar farm. We could look at maybe not residential, maybe, but we could look at industrial or commercial use, correct? Is that possible? Is that, is that where I'm following? And am I following that all right?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that you've got the right idea there for sure. We're, we're going to make sure that we're considering the remediation costs and we're considering the land use concept and vice versa.
So what happens if this doesn't go forward as recommended? And, and so how does, how does that planning go? So we would move out the Badger Lands from that whole, so Lakeview would still proceed, but we would just stop with Badger Land? Is that the intent? And I don't, maybe your Council Hughes, that maybe that question is for you.
Yeah, so, go ahead, Council.
You can tell me. Yeah, it's all good. You, you'll be doing it. Go ahead.
Okay. So yeah, so I think the idea would be then, we would leave out the, if, if the motion goes forward, we would leave out the city-owned Badger Lands portion, or the city-owned Badger Lands parcel, 43 City Annex. We would proceed with the St. Albert West to develop the ASP and the NSP portions for the city-owned lands. And at such time as we need an ASP for the 43 City Annex lands, then we would have to do that. It's, we do have, we do have city, areas within the city that proceed with development without area structure plans that, you know, if you look at some of the older areas like Grandin, those do have development that occurs without an area structure plan, but in new growth areas, we, it's preferred that we identify, you know, where infrastructure goes, where streets go, how land you, how is, how land is used, et cetera. And that was why it was included within, within part of this to answer a question that private industry doesn't seem to be, you know, rushing to answer for us at this point.
So is it typical that the city moves ahead with ASP development, or is it something normally where a private developer, just picking up on your last comment, would a private developer be responsible for ASP?
Or? Yes, so the model varies, and we'll be talking about the, the area structure plan, neighborhood structure plan kind of thing. I guess in the New Year's, we talk about just some planning and development one-on-one stuff, but right now, the city is basically largely in the passenger seat on area structure plans. However, with the Badger Lands and the Lakeview Business Park, the city had opted to move forward as, as a way to make those lands become available for development sooner. In some of our neighboring communities, you do see the cities take a more proactive role in area structure plan development. So it's, it's kind of a mixed bag, but the intent with this is that, yes, the city would be more on the driver's side, driver's seat, trying to lead the overall concept of how servicing is delivered to the site, some potential land use concepts that could then be used to promote development.
All right. Thank you.
Council Killick.
Yes, thank you. Could you clarify how much percentage Badger Lands is of the total district in, in the briefing? It says it's a small percentage, but just wondering if you would have a more clear number as to what that actually is?
I want to say it's a little over 10%. I would say it's closer to like 12, 12 to 15%, something like that, just back of the napkin math there.
Okay, that's close enough, I guess. Thank you. And the second question is that my understanding would be that the Transportation Master Plan would be also a part of developing the ASP and that specifically thinking of Fowler Way cutting through the Badger Lands and taking up quite a big chunk of that. Is, is that all taken into consideration when you look at developing the, the ASP?
Yes. So again, to, to what I spoke to earlier, the idea would be that we would identify major servicing, infrastructure, and major transportation routes. Absolutely follow their way, the alignment to follow their way and access off of or to follow their way. Because it goes through that property is absolutely something that would be considered.
Thank you.
All right, I'm seeing no more questions. So, Council Hughes, I'll accept your motion and let you have some opening comments.
First, before I start. So Adrian, I'm just, when I look at a solar farm, it doesn't speak as a very complex ASP. Like, it's not like we're building an entire neighborhood where we have all the sewage and plumbing and everything else. It looks like it's a pretty straightforward ASP, and it really wouldn't take that long to accomplish if we said we're absolutely doing this. I'm assuming it would be a lot faster than trying to do like Lakeview, for example, which at that, right now is not as well-defined. But if we had said, we're doing this, this is the land we're absolutely confident, it's a solar farm, it wouldn't be a complicated ASP to complete. Am I reading it wrong?
I, I think that you're generally pretty correct there. I think if you're talking about a single land use for the majority of that parcel, and then the rest being road right-of-way for Fowler Way, then yeah, your, your, your level of detail is probably a little bit different than if you're starting to plan a really mixed and integrated, you know, 15-minute neighborhood or whatever it may be.
Perfect. Thank you. So the reason to postpone this is just about doing everything in the correct order. We don't know for certain, we, that the solar farm is a go. We really need to have Phase 3 brought in and have that analysis. We need to look at remediation and see what the cost would be for various options between a solar farm to anything else, and then have a real wholesome debate of what that land should look like. Whether it should be used for the solar farm or should be used for other alternatives. We really haven't had that discussion. And I think that we're giving mixed messages to the public. We're also creating a lot more work for administration, who's supposed to come up with an ASP with multiple options. Actually, it's adding to complexity, whereas if we just simply waited until we had the Phase 3 and waited till we had the remediation report, and then made a decision based on the information we have, and then discussed alternatives and decided either this is what we're doing with it, or perhaps doing something else with it, but then make a final decision, and then to administration, which will just be in a year from now, this is go and, and complete the project with this vision in mind. I think it'll be much easier for them to do it. It also puts it in the steps that we are doing a final approval after final numbers, and this is definitely the decision we're making, as opposed to just kind of doing everything simultaneously, and then somehow coming up with a decision at the end. So that is the reason why I said that this should, I recommending that we postpone this a year is just to give ourselves the time to get the facts that we don't have right now, and then make that decision. And as Mr. Slott has said, that if it was chooses to be a solar farm in five or six or seven months' time, it would not be difficult or as long of a process for the ASP to be completed if the final decision is a solar farm. And if the final decision isn't a solar farm, I really don't want to waste administration's time or taxpayer dollars to put forward something where we're discussing many other options when this may not actually be the final decision that we end up making. That's it.
Anyone else have any comments? Council Killick.
I missed the question that I have. I apologize. Adrian, the briefing document, thank you for preparing it, indicates that the RFP is closing, I believe, and your concern about reputational impacts with, of going either back and changing it. I don't think we would expect it to be withdrawn, but could you clarify, has it closed? And does that mean people are closed and submitting bids, or closed and they have now a month to work on it before they submit a bid under the, the Alberta procurement website? Where, where are we in the timeline there?
Yeah, so the, the, the posting is up right now. What, what we're trying to avoid is a position that we get ourselves in where we're kind of, I guess, offering something or, or saying that we're going to do something and then not do it. What we've talked about a little bit with procurement is if we need to, we can probably do an, an extension or an addendum, depending on how complex we get here with council today, and have a, a minor change in scope before it, before it finally fully closes with submittals. We don't, what we don't want to do is, you know, have industry partners spending a lot of time working on a submittal that includes something that we're not going to end up doing. Does that help, Council Killick?
But amendments aren't uncommon. They're quite standard, actually, on APC. You'd see lots of projects with lots of amendments on them, either to give vendors request more time, or situation changes it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair. Yeah, we're just, yeah, it's just flag that we, we didn't want to overpromise something, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on debate? I think for me, there's a sentence in the backgrounder that says, "removal of 43 City Annex North", sorry, "would result in some initial project cost savings, but the savings would be minimal as compared to the additional costs and staffing resources to study and plan these lands at a later date." So that's, that's honestly why the fact that the RFP is out, it's almost closed, that this would delay it, that it's not going to have a lot of savings. And the fact that we've been trying to get this area structure plan done since 2017. We postponed it to do the MDP, and it's brought, brought back. Staff were really clear in their background or that they did not assume future land uses. So this is really nothing to do with the solar farm. And I just feel like having an unplanned piece of, of the Northwest there that brings into question transportation networks and, and servicing is, it's not a great idea for minimal savings, so not going to support it. Council Hughes to close?
Thank you. I have one more question, Mr. Slott. Is it normal for administration to put forward RFPs for projects without getting council approval on them first?
So, Council Hughes, we actually do have council approval for, I guess, Phase 1, Phase 2, which we've, that's what the, that's what the current RFP is for. So we, we've gotten already the, the 100,000 for technical studies, and then we had another 400,000 for initial consulting work. What, what we're trying to do is capture everything in this, in this APC, I guess, contract award right now that we're, we're seeking the RFPs for.
Oh, but the 140,000 that we approved, that was just for Lakeview? That wasn't for the Badger Lands as well?
The, I'd have to go back and look. The 100, I think it was 105,000 originally. That was for technical studies for city-owned lands, and then there was $400,000 that was for the ASP design work for the, for, I believe it was ASP for Badger and Lakeview.
I remember.
It was a city-owned lands.
But this RP that we're discussing, it's already closed, is specific to this recommendation from this budget.
The RFP, as it is right now, can capture what we're intending to do. I guess it's just, it's just funding the, the final, that final phase of, of work for ASP development.
Right, but you put forward an RFP for ASPs for a project that's not been approved by council?
We put forward the, the RFP for the funding that we do have with council.
So.
For the 400,000 that was approved last year.
Okay.
That got, that got postponed. We, we held off on that until we finished MDP. And then we've been working on preparing that RFP since this, since that time.
And you're telling me that it included the Badger Lands last time for the 400,000? It included the Badger Lands?
I believe that was the intent, Council Hughes. Yeah, I believe that was the intent. And my recollection was that it was city-owned Badger Lands, city-owned Lakeview Lands.
I want to argue.
No.
Thank you. So, on closing, the reality is that ASP should reflect the intended use of the land. And we have told residents that we will be doing due diligence before we approve the solar farm. And approving Badger Lands and putting the solar farm in there sends very mixed messaging. And the costs to the ASP for Badger Lands would be not significant, and the extra money that we have left over from either what the 400,000 from last time, or with whatever will not be spent on this one, can be used towards the Badger Lands. But putting forward plans when you don't know for certain that that's what you're going to use that land for is wasting money. It's not saving money. It's wasting money. So unless we're really confident that we're going to put the solar farm in, regardless of what those numbers show. So unless we're really confident that we're going to put the solar farm in, regardless of what those numbers show up to be at the end of next year, I think that it's proper to actually wait until we get those numbers and look at the alternate costs and look at the total remediation costs. And then make a decision. I'm just saying postpone twenty-three. If the number comes in sooner, council can move it ahead sooner. But I don't see the savings of trying to manage something when our statement has been that we're going to do due diligence. You can't be doing due diligence when you continue to go on multiple tracks and include something before we have phase three analysis is done. That's it. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with Counselor Bremanski, Hughes, and Kilic in favor. All right, we're on to six point, or sorry, postpone motion zero two nine, which is the solar farm on funding. Counselor Hughes, I'll get you to read it in.
Sure. At the budget and scope of project charter, ENV dash zero zero four solar farm is originally approved in the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one council meeting. It's reduced from twenty-six million, one hundred thousand to one hundred and thirty-five thousand to include only that portion of the project related to the pre-construction work on the solar farm that was approved at the August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
All right, any questions on this? Counselor Hughes, you have any questions? You're good?
Nope.
All right, so you no questions. I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
This is about doing due diligence. Uh, we've had the numbers that were provided in June twenty-first change uh more than once already in the past several months, and it was confirmed on the August thirtieth meeting that the numbers will be changing again and evolving until phase three is presented to council. So with this, this motion does not stop phase three from moving forward. It does not stop the due diligence from moving forward. All it simply does is stop the preapproval of a project. And ultimately, that number at the end of phase three and time has passed with just inflation, et cetera, may not be twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. And so it could be substantially higher. Uh, solar panels are going up in cost, as is everything else. And the numbers from beginning to end, I'm expecting to evolve into something different. So when we saw those numbers in June twenty-first, there was an assumption that they would not be changing and, or not substantially, at least, and that, but we've, we've learned that they could and probably will. And so really what we should do is the proper process should have been at that time to do the next phase of analysis. And then look at the numbers where we're not plus or minus saying thirty or fifty percent. And then make a decision about whether or not the project charter should be um approved. Uh, so really, this is just about doing the phase three analysis. Coming forward, this is not going to kill the solar farm as the backgrounder says. What it's going to do is simply stop the preapproval process. And then have a debate. Once we have all the numbers and have the remediation and we have the considerations of whether or not the solar farm should move forward at that time. So that's just all it is. This is just about following an order that makes sense when you're trying to do due diligence on a project of this magnitude. That's it.
All right, anyone else on debate? Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is basically uh the same motion that uh the previous council dealt with. Quite honestly, the uh one hundred and thirty-five is already there and there uh and we're waiting for any decision based on the outcome of that uh particular study. And uh so what, what this does, I think, is, is uh sort of perpetuate the misunderstanding around our capital uh uh programming and uh our borrowing process. Now, if you want to take a look at our borrowing process and, and change it, that's fair enough, but to me, this doesn't really have any cause and effect other than to um you know, I, I guess, I don't know what you're saying here. But we've already really debated this motion like not less than uh four months. And uh, and quite honestly, the one hundred and thirty-five, we're going to wait until the outcome of that uh study is done and then, and then we'll make decisions. And so to the point, uh, there won't be any decision around the future of the, of the Badger Lands until we uh, the solar farm in relation to the Badger Lands until we get the outcome of that study. So um, I mean, if we want to erase the past, I guess that's what this is about.
Counselor Kilic?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the slides that was in our council briefing packages uh and coun- and council orientation packages was a slide where it showed the twenty-six million dollars um on the books, so to speak. Uh, it was the bar chart. We asked a couple of questions about could we show that as a dotted line because we really hadn't made a commitment, but we'd sort of made a commitment. And it seems to me that this is one way that we could very clearly say that we have not made a commitment. That that bar chart could be brought down to where it should be um by removing the twenty-six million dollars. Uh, we continue the work as we've asked to do due diligence. Uh, get the facts, get the next level of facts. We've got the one hundred and thirty-five thousand committed to do that. And it would clean up both our process, our governance of that process and the financial picture that we put forward. Uh, both internally and budget deliberations, but also to the public. So um, I, I would be supporting this uh, this motion.
Counselor Mackay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't really going to enter into debate because realistically wise, as Counselor Broad has already identified, the this has already come in front of a previous council and we were assured basically that the twenty-six million, the debenture uh are, that we approved first reading was just basically sitting there. We're not going to service any debt that doesn't impact it. So I mean, if we're going to look at fixing a historical perspective or a historical policy, then we should be doing that, but not through a motion that doesn't. Yeah, it does clean off the books, but it doesn't fix the actual policy or the practice that we have had historically. And I mean, basically, that's the way we were uh instructed when I think I asked the question was is I mean, we just didn't have a lot of debentures in the past and this is the way we do it. We put it out on first reading, but it just sits there and now we have X, I have it. It just, it just sits there for two years if it never gets used and a perfect example was uh arising out of the last council was when we had the borrowing bylaw for the failed branch library. It sat there, but then we just removed it from the books. It was on our twenty seventeen budget or twenty eighteen budget, but it didn't really reflect anything. It, it just sits there. You're right. From a pure kind of accounting perspective, yeah, it's probably not the right way, but I think we need to address that in a different process. I believe that's actually one of the things that I would like to address. Uh, and when the time is appropriate, but realistically wise, it's just this twenty-six one is sitting out there. If we come, if the one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar um study comes back and says, yeah, this isn't quite what we need to do. We don't need to move forward or there's other better ways of dealing with it, then we deal with it. And uh, the, it's basically gone. But if, if, if it comes back and says that this is an opportunity, well, then we have it. Yes. We ha- had all the discussion about the process and about then, you know, having uh access for the public to make sure that they come and talk to us about the specifics of that borrowing bylaw. But that's not in front of us right now. That whole process is not in front of us right now. So um I'm just going forward on, on what we have right now. And although it's not a perfect process, it's the process that we have right in place of us right now. And I uh, I, I don't believe that I can support the motion.
Counselor Bremanski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the comments that I have with regard to this, I do agree with um, with Counselor Kilic. And uh, the contentious issue around this election was the solar farm. So I mean, I haven't had a citizen not even one mentioned to me that they're in favor of the solar farm. So maybe others have heard something different. But to be putting this, the check mark on this again is reinforcing that it is an intent to go forward. And um, when you have a borrowing amount of twenty-six million dollars for a population of our size, a lot of the community is up at arms about that number and you can say the number is going to be sitting there and we may not use it, but the fact is you could use it and then they're stuck with paying the debt. So I will support this motion just to show the community um that um, you know, we, we do stand behind what they've been telling. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, to me, this is, this, this motion honestly, as Counselor Broad had, somebody said change is nothing, mean, it means nothing except for, goes against process. Um, this is how we budget in the city of St. Albert. We have a whole package and sometimes it's a multi-year thing and, and we approve it all at once. Counselor Bremanski, there are people in favor of the solar farm and I forwarded you an email either yesterday or today from a resident in favor of the solar farm. So I know there are people out there. Saw lots on social media. I think there's a fear in the community that we're going to spend twenty-six million dollars and people will be servicing that debt. Well, we're not going to spend twenty-six million dollars until the report comes back to council and the due diligence is done. And if it causes the taxpayer to service the debt, we're not going to do it. This is going to be, the debt will be served by the revenue generated from the solar farm. So, but process wise and how we do multi-expensive projects here in the city of St. Albert, this is the process and I'm, I'm going to unless you want to change the process, Counselor Hughes, that would be a conversation we could have, but I, I'm going, this, this motion achieves essentially the same end goal that we are currently on the same path. So I'm not going to be in favor of it. Counselor Hughes to close?
Thank you. Um, I keep hearing about the last council voted for this. Well, this is a new council, so this council can decide what it's going to do. And just because last council voted for it doesn't mean that this council has to, number one. Number two, I don't think the twenty-six point one million is right. We know that it did not include the off-site levies for nine million dollars plus many other expenses. So the reality is approving a project charter, which we already know is not the correct number. Like, and continuing to allow that number to sit there is not being transparent to the public. And it's also weird, I'm bringing this forward for clarity. Are we intending to prove this project once due diligence is done? Or are we leaving this on the books and then saying we're doing due diligence? It looks like it's the second one. And it looks like all three of my motions are going to be that we're doing due diligence, but we're also keeping everything on the books as pre-approved. So if we wanted to do diligence, what you do is you go through phase three, you get the numbers and you get a proper project charter based on those numbers and then you approve it. What you do not do is approve a number that you know or leave a number on the books that you know is not, is not correct anymore. And this is not about building capital. This is about doing revenue. And so the numbers matter a great deal when we are proposing doing a revenue project. And we now know the numbers that we have. I have nothing to base my numbers of support on. So I don't understand why we think we've already covered this. I don't understand why we think this is a process question. This is a situation where we have new information since June twenty-first that shows that the number of twenty-six point one million is up for debate. It's probably not correct. In fact, since we know it doesn't include off-site levies, we know it's not correct. And so why don't we just go through phase three and then have a discussion based on those numbers? Instead, I'm hearing a majority of council saying, no, we're going to leave it on there, but we're going to do due diligence. Well, decide what you're doing. Are you doing due diligence or are you moving it forward as is? Because the last motion just brought it forward to move the Badger Lands forward as its, in spite of the fact it can be done quite quickly if we chose to a solar farm. Now I have the solar farm on funding, which doesn't stop the process in any way, shape or form. It says in the background, we're moving forward exactly the same as before, but we'll provide absolute clarity to the residents that at least we're going to do due diligence before I move forward. And I'm hearing multiple people on council say that that somehow is offensive. The public would like to know that the steps are being done in a logical order. Approving something on June twenty-first, knowing that the number is changed by August thirtieth and knowing they're going to change again before we get the final number is not the proper process. And this isn't about a process question about how the city's doing something. This is about doing due diligence in what would make sense. So this motion does not stop anything, but it does at least say, let's put the brakes on a preapproval because we don't even know what the number is in the end. And we should have done the phase three before we did it. And we did not have to do the borrowing by law. We did not have to prove it on June twenty-first. What should have come forward in June twenty-first was get approval for a phase three. That did not happen. And instead, we had the entire thing brought forward and then being told a phase three is coming later where numbers will be much more solid. So, and we weren't told the phase three was coming later until August. So it's taking a step back and saying, okay, since we're not sure about the numbers and this is supposed to be a revenue project and we want due diligence, why don't we approve phase three and approve the final numbers on whatever the project charter number should be in the end when it's due time? But right now we are reversing the order and I don't think that's what many people were concerned about, myself included. That's it.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. That motion fails with Counselor Bremanski, Hughes, and Kilic in favor. And now we're on to the rescinding of the borrowing bylaws, which is postpone motion zero three nine. Go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
Sure. That the following motion be rescinded, bylaw twenty-one dash zero three nine, June twenty-first, twenty-one. That bylaw thirty-five slash twenty twenty-one being borrowing by law to design and construct the solar farm be read a first time.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, I accept your motion. Go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
An opportunity for council to decide whether or not they actually should have been approving a borrowing by law on June twenty-first. Uh, knowing that the number is probably not correct, knowing that thirty-three point four million is probably not correct. Twenty-six million plus nine million alone is thirty-five. So that number is probably not correct. And so why don't we pass a borrowing by law when we actually know what the correct number is going to be? You know, as simple as that. That, that, know what the number is going to be before we pass it. And what we know is the number is probably changing. And it doesn't hurt at all once you know what the number is to just bring it forward as the right number. And if the number is higher, you're going to have to put it forward anyways, a brand new borrowing by law. But really, we have a borrowing by law that we keep, all three are people, I'm hearing people say we're doing due diligence and I'm watching on a four-three of four counselors that were there last time, bringing it forward. So you said you're going to do due diligence throughout all of August, September, October, and yet nothing is stopping it from moving forward as before. And uh, but regardless, borrowing bylaws reflect the correct number. And just on the off-site levies that we're missing alone, we're missing nine million dollars. So the number is going to be incorrect. So why don't we just rescind it? That's it.
Counselor Kilic?
It seems to me that we've got a number of things that are uh, subject to change in terms of uh, pre-construction information, the size of the site information uh changing as Fowler Way goes through the middle of the Badger Lands. Uh, solar panels have uh been reported in all the industry trade magazines who have gone up by twenty percent in the last uh eight to ten months uh due to uh logistical supply, delivery challenges, supply chain challenges, as well as uh demand large projects like the ACO project uh down in Calgary chewing up hundreds of uh thousands of solar panels uh in, in one fell swoop. Um, we've got uh potentially a very different cost model uh coming forward and as well as a customer model could be a PPA agreement with an external uh company. It could be the city uh buying the power itself to uh uh meet its own demands. Uh, we have very different peak demand, off-demand models that are coming forward. And it seems to me that the borrowing by law uh is again getting ahead of itself. It's kind of the cart before the horse uh scenario. Um, I do support doing the due diligence um on the site, moving forward with it in that regard. But having the borrowing by law uh as it is, is before we've got all the information, we really we really need to, to approve that. I think the other key thing is that if we were to, to rescind the borrowing by law as it is, gives the citizens the, and it gives council the ability to request a full public hearing. Right now, with it going forward, there may be a public hearing, there may not. But it puts it back into-
Madam Mayor, point of, point of privilege, that's, yeah, borrowing bylaws require a, a public hearing. Yes, I, I just don't want that information to get out.
But it's, it's only, it, it, it's already passed first reading though.
There is. It's no, it's, so it's not a public hearing, it's the petition, councillor, Mr. LaFleur, go ahead.
Just for clarity, a borrowing by law must be advertised, okay? It does not require a public hearing, but it does have to be advertised. And the importance of that, and we, and as councillors from the previous council will know, this council put in its own very special policy, unique in Alberta, to extend significantly the period during which the residents can present a petition, right? So, so basically, the whole idea is that if people don't like the borrowing by law, they can petition against it and they have much longer in St. Albert than in any other municipality to do that. It's also important to note that if the borrowing by law is already passed, if it turns out there's a shortfall and if the shortfall is more than fifteen percent of the original estimated capital cost, then you have to advertise a supplemental borrowing by law to increase the borrowing. It's a little bit unclear in the MGA whether you have to do the same thing if you're just amending it at second reading. My advice would be if that situation came up, you would have to advertise to be safe. You should advertise again if you're proposing it to make a second reading amendment to increase the amount of the borrowing by more than fifteen percent. So that's kind of the, the legal background about what you do to get a borrowing by law passed. Okay.
Oh, okay, so it's good to get the clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, because I know what you're saying. Yeah, go ahead.
Tried to be clear, I apologize to say that it would be councils' ability to ask or, or to offer a public hearing on the new borrowing by law. It's not mandatory, it's not, it's different than the petition period. I tried to make that clear, that it would be up to our council today to make that, or provide that opportunity to the residents. When the new borrowing by law came forward, we, we could ask for a public hearing. So I'll go back to all the things that have changed and, and more. I won't use the, the word transparency. I'd, I'd prefer just to say that we give that opportunity. I don't think we have to, you know, kind of beat the transparency horse. But, but I would like to see public engagement in when we bring back or if we were to bring back a, a new borrowing by law, if we rescind this current one. That, that would be my sole rationale is for public engagement. Thank you.
All right, any more comments on debate? I'll just point out councillor Killick, that public engagement happens every meeting. You don't have to have a public hearing, you don't even have to have a petition. We have five hundred people up there, that would be significant, so. Councillor Hughes to close.
It seems quite fair to the public that we're going to be moving forward on this project because our opportunity to show clarity that we're going to do due diligence then approve it does not appear to be happening. It appears we're continuing to approve projects and then do due diligence later. And I think the people were looking for some level of assurance that the proper due diligence should be happening with their tax dollars before approvals occurred. And we know the numbers are going to change, which means that we have not done the due diligence before we've done any of these things. And it would really be nice to show the public that at least there's been some cautionary developments between what's being decided and what we're saying to the public and what will ultimately happen on that land. That's it, thanks.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. And that motion fails with councillor Bermansky, Hughes and Killick in favor. All right, we are now on, on to councillor Bermansky's first budget motion. Police services building postponed motion thirty. Why don't you read it in and then we'll get to questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That poly zero zero six policing services building accommodations for five million dollars is postponed to twenty twenty-three for consideration in capital budget.
All right, any questions on the police services building? Councillor Mackay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the ability to bring this forward, so I appreciate you bringing it up. So I'm, a couple of questions that were identified in the background there and maybe for the, for, for more clarity. So it identified potential contract implications. Can you expand on that or can somebody expand on that?
Who's doing this?
There's, basically, I think, are you, are you referring through the, through the chair of councillor Mackay? Are you referring to, I guess, federal public works being able to mandate, change the building? Or which were you referring to when you said on contract implications?
I mean, Everett's on the line now, but it says, it, it says in the operational organizational impacts, if a motion is approved, the contract implications could include the potential for the RCMP release back, bill back and name. I mean, and then you identify that there's potential identified other kind of penalties that the municipality might be facing if we don't fulfill some of the, our, our expectations under either the municipal agreement or the provincial agreement or, I, I just need more clarity around that.
Well, I can probably, Director Cook makes some comments on this, but this refers back to Public Works Canada being able to dictate the improvements to the facilities and build them back to the municipality if we do not, if we do not move forward with the recommended changes. Would they do that? It would probably take a few years for that to happen, but they, but they always have that hammer within the, within the agreements, but I'll let Director Cook elaborate.
Excellent, thank you Deputy CAO Hilt. Just, just to continue with that comment, it's absolutely correct. We have history with this, with this detachment dating back to two thousand and one, when the building was built, understanding that the capacity or that it would be built for approximately ten years and, and such, or allow us the opportunity to operate with no capacity issues for approximately ten years. Again, that was two thousand and one. We've had a couple of studies done to date, two thousand and ten. It was identified that we were over capacity or becoming over capacity. And then, of course, recently, the most recent study was done that identified not only do we need to do our security upgrades to the front counter, which is, has been ongoing for some time, also to, to add another thirty percent or so to the building so we can accommodate space needs. Of course, COVID nineteen is a driver for that. With respect to, if we, if this motion is to pass and we not move forward with any accommodations to modify this building, yes, we do fall subject to the Public Works Canada being able to source out accommodations that they feel are appropriate and we would be on the hook for a hundred percent of those costs. More information may be required on timing of that, but as CAO Hilt said, it could be a couple of years out. But at the same time too, with the history, that could be sooner as well. That's a date we just couldn't hammer down today.
Thanks. I mean, I, I guess one of the unfunded projects in the budget was, and it's been unfunded for several years now, was the Maloney Place front counter security system. And I think each time we keep, we kept, I think it just didn't meet the criteria because I think we were looking at potentially something a little broader, a little bigger. So, because it's referenced in the background, so the intent would be this, this would address the shortcomings of the front counter security issues in Maloney Place?
Correct. The, the project for five million dollars would, would incorporate the POLI dash zero zero five project that was presented to council, which is unfunded for two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to address the security or updating the security at the front counter, yes.
Okay, and, and then the study that was done in two thousand and twenty-one, I identified seven hundred and sixty-six square meters. So if, if this is potentially postponed a year or so, I mean, do we know, I mean, were there any other impacts identified that required it to be? I mean, was this like something that needed to be done yesterday? Or was this something that potentially identified for future growth? Or is this a real immediate shortcoming potentially around cell block security or even not enough facilities in relation to, again, from an OH and S capacity?
Correct. I actually had the pleasure of touring the facility just, just yesterday, as a matter of fact. And to, to verify that the, the space is a concern, not only with where the dispatchers sit, but also where officers, as well as all the clerical staff sit as well. I would suggest that this, this is needed now to address the occupational health and safety, the space issues, for example, that our staff feel in the, in the building. This is a phased project. I, I do want to just elaborate on that a little bit, where the first year would be going to, going out, getting a consultant, having engineers do the designs force and then starting the procurement process where the actual construction would start either late twenty twenty-two, but more likely in early twenty twenty-three. Of course, the impact, the financial impact wouldn't be felt from this project until earliest twenty twenty-three or perhaps even twenty twenty-four.
All right, and this is kind of just like, are we putting a Band-Aid on a bigger problem? Should, I mean, obviously, should we be looking at planning for something? I mean, I guess the alternative would be one big, brand-new building at, I can't even imagine the cost, probably twenty, I think the Duke one came in at twenty-four million. And so, I mean, this is, I mean, is this suspected to last until twenty thirty-four, till the end of the contract or is this just something that's going to just be a Band-Aid on a bigger, on a, on a problem?
That's an excellent question. It is anticipated to meet our current needs at current growth rates until twenty thirty, twenty thirty-four. Of course, that's subject to change, depending on the growth of the city of St. Albert, of course. Is this a bigger Band-Aid on a bigger, on a bigger problem or a bigger solution? Those discussions need to, need to happen. And very recently, that conversation was had, opportunity to explore options regionally can be explored, of course, and we can reach out to partners in the area as well as internally with our other emergency services departments, that is an option. Can that be done in a timely fashion to see this come to fruition? I, I can't answer that yet, but that is an option for sure.
And my last question, and I apologize if for other council members, that, so, I mean, anything that we do now, I mean, anticipating that potentially the province is moving in a different direction around providing policing services, anything we can do still, it kind of stays within the city inventory and we would just, whatever model of policing that moves forward, it would just stay within our, our, our inventory?
That would be our, our understanding to date. Of course, more information is needed on what a provincial police force may look like, but that would be, be the assumption today, yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Killick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question would be, I assume the Maloney Place will still continue to be fully operational while it undergoes construction or will there be, will they be moving some of the services over to where we have the food bank? What, what, how will that work?
Excellent question, to council through the chair. Those final plan or those plans haven't been finalized or wouldn't be finalized at this point, but our detachment would be required to remain operational, depending on how the project was to roll out and what would be identified as, would the front counter security part of the project be done first? Then we focus on cell blocks and then the next area? That would drive the answer to your question. The best I could, I could tell you today is the detachment is required to stay open. We would be looking to accommodate municipal enforcement staff, for example. Should they be, should they have to relocate temporarily why these, why the modifications and improvements are, are done? More to follow on that. I, I couldn't give you a definitive answer quite yet, but that would be a part of the plan.
Second question would be that with, I, I couldn't find any details as to what was being proposed with the actual construction of seven hundred and sixty-six meters. Is that all at Maloney Place to?
Correct. So that additional space is, is added room or added square footage to Maloney Place, yes. So that's filling in some of the areas on the exterior of the building that can be utilized to accommodate more offices, space, as well as work in the cell block area.
So adding exterior space to the building, does that impact already a shortfall in parking?
Parking has been identified as a part of this project and that would be behind fire hall two and, and an expansion. I don't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, have a lot of details on the parking lot expansion itself, but parking would be expanded to accommodate additional growth as well.
And, and my last question would be around the financing. If the first part of it is the plan and design, do we know how the, the five million will be spent? It kind of goes back to the solar farm question around, we borrow the full amount, but we don't actually spend it. That's quite the entrance.
Um, yeah, so typically, typically how we manage this is, you know, we need sort of commitment for the full project in terms of the project charter. We put forth a borrowing by law to cover the whole project, but we only borrow as we need it. So we, we borrow in, in, so that five million isn't necessarily borrowed all at once. We manage it, we work with our engineering department and we, we try to understand the cash flows and we basically borrow it as, as sort of late as we can. So a project like that would probably be taken out in a minimum of two separate draws, maybe even up to three.
So it could be five hundred thousand for design and four point five million for construction in, which would hit the books in twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, so we typically take, we try to take out our diventures in the last half of the year, which means that our first payment isn't due until the following, in following year. So I would say twenty twenty-four is probably the very first year that we would see any impacts from borrowing on this project. And then it may not even be the whole amount, it may be only a portion of it and then the other portion potentially in twenty-five.
Thank you.
Any more questions councillor Hughes? Any questions? No? Okay, excuse me, accept your motion councillor Bermansky, go ahead.
Thank you. So first of all, of course, or through Madam Mayor to administration, there's a lot of, you know, we appreciate our police force, absolutely. And we understand that, you know, they're in crowded spaces and whatever, but we're in such a time right now that we don't know where the police's direction is going. First of all, we got a surprise of three million dollars in wages from the federal government this year with not much help from that. In the, when their contract obligation lease listings are coming forward, they mentioned that, you know, they may have to lease alternative space. Well, they already are leasing alternative space. And if they do construction, they'll probably have to lease alternative space. The issue I have with this is we have a federal government dictating what we have to do to improve the police facilities. And then we have a federal government dictating that we have to improve our nine-one-one system right now. And then we have a federal government that's putting forward the wage increases for the police and it's all kind of landing at the same time. We can say that the building might work for, you know, if, if the police force happens to change to provincial, we can say that that building might work, but it might not work. So we could also wait until we have more notice or direction on that. I think a lot of the space problems now in the policing areas and in other areas is- I think a lot of the space problems now in the policing areas and in other areas is social distancing too. So, I mean, we're putting social distancing distancing into every model of space right now. And we don't know where that's going to be in another year or two as well. The funds for this for this facility is is quite a large number. And, you know, again, coming forward in 2024 and 2025. I think it would be wise to hold off because perhaps we could have some sort of support. If there is a provincial policing at some point, there might be grants or funding to help with the building sources for that type of policing. There's no nothing saying that these buildings will be used in the future. Although I do believe that their facilities need to be, you know, safe. So I'm not sure. I actually like more answers on what in that front end safety piece is. But going forward, I think the timing couldn't be much worse than it is right now to go forward with this project, just because you're shuffling people out of their workspaces, trying to separate people in their workspaces, trying to manage the the wage increases. Everybody's sort of unsettled with what's going on. So if you could at least have a constant in the building, have it calm, but not kick right into construction in the new year, I believe it could be beneficial even to the people working there.
Counselor McCray.
Great comments, actually, and I I appreciate all of the concerns identified. I just, I mean, I I have a little bit of background. I mean, I was involved in some of the capital construction involved in when I worked in Edmonton Police Service. And and some of the nuances that is required in a in a police facility is quite outside of the ordinary in relation to construction. And I I point out quite quickly to cell block. And when you are required to take somebody's freedoms, there's a equal requirement to make sure that the detention area is at a certain standard. And matter of fact, the police regulations around what's required are quite specific. And and all it does is add to cost. And as you can imagine, some of the some of the costs that we're talking about today are only going to increase every kind of year out that we continue to delay this. And and I and I realize some of the frustrations that we're dealing with the federal. But I mean, in in St. Albert, we've signed a municipal agreement and we're responsible for our police agency that we chose. And even if potentially the provincial government's initiative to move forward with an Alberta provincial police moves forward, you're talking six to 10 years out, easily six to 10 years out. You have to give two years just to a notice on on terminating the contract. Then you need to determine out what the structure is. You need to get into all all the recruiting, all of the 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 training, all the requirements. I mean, we're we're years away, no matter what the decision is. So, I mean, we we could, we could delay it based on some of the unknowns in relation to that. But in reality, we still have a known shortfall that actually, even though we've identified it again in 2021, we've had that shortfall since 2010. And and some of it is potentially spacing issues, but there's in addition to some of the other complexities, there are O H and S issues that identify workable space outside of just some of the the particular the peculiarities of actually having a police building. But I I I'm concerned in the sense that potentially it will impact our members, our members' health, our member's safety and the safety of civilians working inside the facility. So $5 million sounds like a a lot at this particular time. But at the same time, you know, the options like I've asked my question are a brand new build and are looking at potentially some synergies with partnerships or fire or even going to a regional. But, I mean, we're still looking at big dollars and we're still looking at years away. So I recognize that although this isn't ideal and sometimes, like I mentioned, it's putting a Band-Aid on a on a bad problem. But it's necessary for our our police officers and the members and the civilian members that work in that facility. And and I I think that if we delay it another year, it's just going to add on to the big costs. So I'm I'm going to not support it, although I understand your your thoughts behind it.
Anyone else on debate? Nothing from me. So Counselor Vermeski to close?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In reply to Counselor Mackay, maybe I can convert him back again. The costs, you can say that the costs will be going up. But, I mean, we all know that Woods at a high right now, there's lots of construction costs that are high. Everything's high now, whether it's vehicles, whether it's building, whether it's furnaces, whatever it is. You can't even get furnaces for things right now when people are doing constructions. If you talk to a lot of the developers, there's delays on things. So, I mean, you could be mid-project and all of a sudden you can't get a furnace for a specific area that you need. And that's the supply chain right now. So when I go back to the mention of health of the people working there. If you're ever in a construction zone where it gets prolonged and delayed because you can't get everything done, it becomes a very uncomfortable space. So what would happen at that point in time? You'd probably have to lease out alternative space, depending on what they're working on the area. They said that they've been, you also mentioned that the shortage of space has been known for a while. But the last rebuild was actually projected to accommodate properly to 2021. We're still in 2021, so the shortfall hasn't been identified much past the last build. And I think that in spending money now, if you think that it it, you know, it could be wasted cost because it's more expensive, it could be wasted cost because it would be less expensive in the future as well. Again, I I'm just, I'm just trying to think that people working in the space. And it's a very, very tough time right now to be in workspaces, to be dealing with each other, to be comfortable. And a construction site is never comfortable, ever. So even just getting past the, you know, hopefully brighter springs the next year, and I understand that the needs are there and that, you know, the people need the proper needs. But I think the timing is wrong. Thank you.
All right. Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that motion fails with Counselor Vermeski in favor. And that is the end of municipal capital topics. And I saw dinner just arrived, so why don't we take a break? It's a good good place to take a break. It's five-ish. We'll get back to that at 5:30. So Counselor Hughes, 5:30? Okay, thanks.
All right, Council Hughes, you with us?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. Okay, we are on to operating. And so we had a quick conversation in the lounge that if we've got one or two motions left at seven o'clock, are you guys all okay finishing off today? I don't think we're gonna get there in an hour and a half, but we could try. We'll see. Then we don't have to come back next Tuesday. So the first motion on municipal operating was the freeways, which was approved on consent. The motion read as follows. To provide, oh. To provide freeways as an ongoing service standard in the community, increase the base budget by forty-two thousand. This would result in the freeways becoming part of the service provision of outdoor skating in the winter two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, and beyond. So that was on consent, but there was a question about whether that means we're gonna actually have the freeway at Lyons Park as well as Rotary Park. So I don't know if there's anyone online who can answer that. They probably thought it's all consent, we're going home.
To the chair, Diane Inger, I could address, so are you looking for having, is a question around freeway at Lyons Park in twenty-two or in twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
So currently in twenty-two, so currently in twenty-two, funding is for a freeway at Rotary Park. That was part of the pilot project where we did Lyons last year, and we'll do Rotary this year. Based on that motion, that was passed on consent next year, so the twenty-two, twenty-three winter season, we would have a freeway at Rotary and Lyons are comparably two sites within the city.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the clarification. Is that good? Not this year, but next year. Okay, motion, possible motion zero zero five was the Home Energy Retrofit Accelerator Program Funding. It reads as that fifty thousand be added to the budget for the Home Energy Retrofit Accelerator Program for a three-year program funded from the tax levy. So any questions on that one? Nothing. All right. I don't have a lot of arguments prepared for this one. So this is, excuse me, a program that is essentially copied off of the city of Edmonton and other municipalities do offer grant funding to encourage residents to redo their home and doesn't always have to be solar panels. It could be new furnaces or new windows, anything that helps them with their carbon footprint. A audit of their house is required before they actually do the work. I think there's been significant interest from the community. So this actually was passed by the previous council. It was supported, and so I was kind of surprised to see it unfunded by administration, although I get it. It was actually for seventy-five thousand, I've reduced it to about fifty to try to save some money, but at the same time, I know residents have been waiting for this. I think many of you, especially from last term, saw emails, and I would always respond with, I hope it's supported next term. So that is the program. And honestly, we can do everything we can as a municipality and a corporation to work on our own buildings and, you know, work with transit and solid waste and stuff. But the majority of the footprint comes from the actual homes themselves. So if we want to tackle climate change, then we need to encourage our residents to as well. So this will help them. Council Mackay.
Yeah, I wasn't quick enough.
Oh, is this a question?
So I have a question because the reason I pulled it was due to the last paragraph in the background is based on city administration. Their recommendations are is that we kind of wait until we know what the FCM CFF application is, plus also they maybe recommend a different, rather than out of the tax levy, that it would actually fund from the energy efficiency reserve.
Yep.
So I just wanted, I just wanted more information in relation to that, or if that's what we should be doing.
Do you have a question?
Well, that was my, that was the reason I pulled it.
Okay.
The question would be is, is so if that's the administration's recommendation, then I just need, like, when, when do we think that this, are we kind of getting ahead of ourselves in the sense of of this, because we could be getting a grant that would fund it? Is that, is that, I don't know if Christian's on or if somebody else is on?
The person we want is Megan Myers, the manager of environment. I believe she's on, and she could give us a status update of efforts so far.
Yes.
Thanks, Megan. Sorry, that was like the voice of God speaking.
So the, we are waiting on funding from FCM for the SEEP program. So the Clean Energy Improvement Program, it wouldn't affect HARA. However, based on workload and et cetera, we'd want to wait to see if that program is gonna go ahead before we implement another energy efficiency program in the community.
What about the second part, Megan, in relation to the Energy Efficiency Reserve? And so that wouldn't be on the tax levy then, we would just fund that. How would we do that if it, can we fund it? It's for a three-year program funded from the tax levy. Are you saying that we have sufficient money in that reserve for the three-year period?
We should have sufficient money in two thousand and twenty-two to fund at least a year of a program. I'm not sure, multiple years, but it would come back to council in two thousand and twenty-three, once we figure out the success of our SEEP funding.
So just my question then is, is based on, or my follow-up question, pardon me, is that so you're recommending that we kind of hold off because of capacity issues? And also, if we were to move forward, that we would identify an alternative funding source?
Correct, yeah.
I don't know, Madam Mayor, I mean, you've already introduced this, and I apologize, that was my
That's okay.
My fault for
I'm still moving it.
I was looking for my notes as I was saying, why am I doing this? But that, those are my concerns. I mean, I'm, so have you moved it? Have you, have you moved it?
I am going to.
So can I, you want me to?
I've already started debates.
My comments then, can I, I'm not out of order?
No, you can go.
Not yet, anyway. So I guess that would be my only concern. And so I'm not sure if you're willing to look at a friendly in relation to identifying a different funding source, because I do think that there's value to do this. And you're correct, we have identified in the community that we're moving forward, and for all the right environmental reasons and climate change reasons. And but I just don't want to disregard administration's recommendation and concerns about capacity. So I think that potentially, that's, those are my concerns. And I'm not sure if you want to change the funding source as a friendly.
So to take it from the Energy Efficiency Reserve?
And, and as Megan identified, they believe they only have enough for one year, not three.
I should correct that, that we don't have enough funding, I believe, right now. We're waiting on some, some rebates and et cetera to be able to go into that reserve. So I'm not sure if Diane can provide, I believe there's some funding that had to be removed from that account. So currently, I don't believe there would be enough to fund that right now. But in two thousand and twenty-two, there would, there would be some funding in there to, to fund the HARA program.
So we are talking two thousand and twenty-two?
That's correct.
And so, yeah, the backgrounder says the reserve will have a sufficient balance in two thousand and twenty-two, which is a couple of months. So there is sufficient balance or not?
We're anticipating some deposits into that account, but we, there isn't a sufficient balance right now.
Okay, so the backgrounder's kind of, yeah, error there.
There has been some money that has been removed from that, from that reserve in the last couple of weeks. So there, there will not be sufficient funds currently, but in two thousand and twenty-two, we're anticipating some deposits.
So just follow up, Madam Mayor, I mean, normally when we fund a position, we'd fund it half year, right? Correct? So we would be looking at, would this still apply, Ms. Murney, in relation to how we fund this position?
There's no position.
Oh, this is the actual program, right, correct. I apologize. You're right. The program would be, if we approved this, it would start potentially January two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm a little leery then to say it should come off of the, off of the reserve if we don't know if we're gonna have enough money in there.
So keep it as a tax levy.
Okay. All right. Okay, that was a muddled mess of debate and questions, so I apologize for that. But I did want to ask those questions.
That's all good. No debate then?
No debate, but I was just worried about the funding source.
Okay. Anyone else on debate? I can tell you, I met with the CEO of FCM yesterday, and they were excited that St. Albert has applied for the SEEP funding and are, you know, it'll happen. It's coming from the federal government. They have plans to do it. Go ahead, Council Hughes. Sorry.
It's okay. The first time you enter the motion, you always forget me. That's normal. Because I'm up here. Mayor, I'm just, if we're gonna have the capacity from it, anticipating it two thousand and twenty-two, would you be willing to just say that the first year of it come from the stabilization fund? And following years from the CIP fund? And that way, again, we're not raising the taxes, or this, whatever, the reserve?
The Energy Efficiency Reserve?
Yeah. So we could do one year for stabilization and the other two from that reserve?
She's suggesting that year one is from stabilization and twenty-three, twenty-four would be from the Energy Efficiency Reserve.
Oh, yeah, we could do that. We would probably need to do some changes to the wording of the motion, so that, so that that's clear.
So I can totally take that as a friendly, Council Hughes.
Yeah.
So the, to Mayor. So program for three-year program funded from, and you can say year one stabilization, years two and three, the Energy Efficiency Reserve.
Yes. So that, my major concern right now is just that we came in at two and a half, I think, on the tax increase. But like, most of our motions are to increase it, so I've just, even if it's fifty thousand, I'd rather just not have it increased off.
It works, yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor? Okay. That's okay. We'll give her some time. She's all by herself today. Perfect. All right, thank you. Call for the vote. voting's closed. That passes unanimously. I think we made some residents very happy. All right. The indigenous program funding. So I will say that that was not my motion that I put forward. I had X to be added to the budget to fund the one FTE from the indigenous program. And I think the FTE was not a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. But when I read it here, I didn't, I didn't change it because now the whole program is funded. So including honorariums and stuff. So thank you for that. We will continue with indigenous programming next year. And then we are on to the annual flower plant funding. That's me again. That seventy-two thousand three hundred be put back into the Public Works budget for the annual flower planting contract funded from the tax levy. Any questions on this? Somebody pulled it from consent, maybe just to vote against it, that's fine.
I pulled it.
Go, you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So how many, how many flower pots or what are we getting for seventy-two thousand three hundred? So I just, I'm trying to remember. I know we have around San Antonio Place, and we have a couple on San Antonio Trail, and I'm trying to think of how that totals seventy-two thousand dollars. And is there any opportunity for us to renegotiate a contract lower? So first question is, how many flower pots are we filling for seventy-two thousand dollars?
Jay?
Yeah, through the mayor. So the pots are all along the trail and at various intersections, as well as subdivision entrances. As far as renegotiating the contract or reducing the contract to certain locations, I can, I can pass that off to Louis. He's our senior manager of public works and manages that contract.
Yeah, okay, through the, Council Hughes from the mayor. So, and as Jay said, these are the intersection planters. These are neighborhood entrance planters. This actually is a combination of the original program that started with economic development. It's a merging, merging of two programs where economic development funded the major intersection planters and Public Works funded the smaller intersections and neighborhood entrances. It's now combined into one program. The, the cost of that program includes supply and install. It's majority of the self-watering planters. The current contract is with a local company right now. Supply, install, maintenance, and replacement of any deficiencies. So you see them at the major entrances and then along major sections within and in front of City Hall on the balcony. It includes the seasonal changeover of those displays in those ones at City Hall. And then the biggest cost is it includes the watering, which in, certainly given the last summer, was a daily occurrence. And if one happens to get damaged by vandalism, we've had them stolen in the past. People are actually picking these things up and taking them away. Or they get damaged by vehicles. It includes the replacement of those.
How many flower pots are we filling?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to go in and pull the information, but I believe it's a little over seventy. And then there are some in-ground beds included as well. It, I believe up at the cemetery has an in-ground that they do some of the entrance features. They're the ones that put the, we started in-ground and it was drying out too quick. So now they're in pots at the, the seven different entrance features into the city.
So around eighty in total, then, let's say.
I do, I can, I can give you an exact number. I just need a minute to go look it up.
Is it gonna affect, Council Hughes?
Well, it kind of is. So what I'm, what I'm, the next question I have is just, did we put this out to an RFP or did we just select? And are we planning to put this out to an RFP? Because I mean, we have the opportunity, marriage to reduce that number from seventy-two thousand and put it to a lower number and go to an RFP and see if it comes in at a more cash-friendly number. So are we doing this for the RFP or are we just basically just renewing a contract every year?
So this was put out to an RFP. We are in the second year of a five-year contract that had the two, two option years, so three guaranteed, and we're in the second option year, so in the fifth year. It did go out to RFP, it went It did go out to RFP. It went around to multiple vendors that could do it. We had a total of two bids. The current bid was substantially different than the other bid.
I see. So it's the watering. Yeah, we're paying almost $1,000 a pot is what you're looking at here, because you have about 80, and this is 72,000. So it's like $900 per flower pot is what it was coming down to.
The, the in-ground beds are treated a little differently because they do go in and they amend that soil to make sure that the, the soil is in good shape over the winter. It is, they, they'll put them in the beginning of June because of the, the frost is still a risk in May, and they pull them out typically the end of September, and they are visiting these sites daily with water and fertilizer. And that's a substantial cost.
Okay, but on average, we're still coming in at about $900 per site.
Yes, and well, included in that though, too, is the seasonal changeovers, four times a year of the ones at City Hall. So it encompasses a number of different services. The actual flowers themselves in the pots accounts for probably about 55,000 of that cost.
Do we need to change them over four times or are they gonna die? Is there a reason why we're changing them over four times?
So the, the ones at City Hall.
My internet went down a little bit.
Uh, the ones at City Hall came through the Economic Development Program, and so those are changed over seasonally to have seasonal displays in them. So in the winter, they'll have winter greens. You know, in the summer, they, they'll have flowers, but they, they tend to reflect the season, and that's just because of the high priority of City Hall and to make sure that the area is always attractive.
I guess I'm wondering, Mayor Hearn, like, are you still comfortable after all that with keeping it at 72,000? Or are we, are you willing to come down a little bit and see if they can find other solutions to this? Because it just seems extremely high. Well, Counselor Hughes, if I was gonna make a change, I'd increase it. You driving through Edmonton right now, they've got seasonal displays in all their intersections. St. Albert doesn't. This is, this is, this is not something we should be cheap on, so.
No, I'm just not sure if we're overpaying.
I, I feel like that's good value, honestly.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Great. Counselor Mackay, question?
Yeah, just quickly, and it might come out of the different areas. So that the boulevard maintenance and cleaning, Louise, is that out of this funding or is that separate funding?
You mean the shrub bed maintenance?
Yeah, the shrub beds and the, and you know, the, the road dividers, those boulevard ones, and the, yeah, yeah.
No, completely separate program. That is a separate contractor that comes in and does those, depending on the priority level, on different schedules, on either bi-weekly or every five weeks is typically where mostly major arterial median beds are done. Different contractor.
All right, thank you.
Speaking of that, Louise, I did a coffee with Kathy this summer, and people were complaining about the weeds, and the very next day they were all cleaned out. So I don't know if somebody at Public Works was watching. Thank you for that.
No, it is done, sorry, every five weeks is what they're done.
All right.
Can we, do we have to have pink every year? Can we get it?
Oh, stop with the pink. All right, I see no more questions. I'm really not even gonna debate or argue this one very much. We're the botanical city. We need to have flowers at the intersection. And I want to see, I think, we could probably even do a better job, so for now, I think we should keep it as is. And I know we will, this council will be severely criticized if we take this out of our service levels. Nothing further.
Mayor Hearn, can I just say something quick?
Right, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Like, I'm gonna support this, but I've just, I would just ask administration to see if there's some way we can get more for this amount of money, either more changeovers or more locations or something. Because it still seems extraordinarily high to be paying, like, on average, $900 a site to get this, even with plant changeovers. So, and if the plants itself are 55,000 for 80 sites, that's still a very high number. So I understand that there's watering involved, but, and there's staffing involved to handle this. But I, I would just challenge admin to see if there's some way that we can make these dollars stretch even more across the city. That's it.
All for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, the dog waste collection funding. PM 008 reads, oh, wait. I'm just, I wanna get to the next one. Can you put it up? Yes, that's the new one. Yes. That 11,000 be put back into the Public Works budget for dog waste collection to enable two waste pickups per year, and that the entire program of 22,000 be funded from the dog license revenue. Any questions on this one? All right, I'm not even gonna enter into debate. Does anyone else want to enter into debate? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that's unanimous. All right, so then Counselor Hughes, you're pulling 019. Your dog waste one, just to confirm.
Yep, it's been called. Thanks.
Okay, and then we are on to more poop. Public toilets at outdoor parks. Oh, that was passed. Oh, good sense. Awesome. So the motion read that 21,100 be put back into the Public Works budget for the public toilets at outdoor recreation facilities and parks funded from the tax levy. All right. Postponed motion 10, the beautification cost-sharing program. It reads as follows, that 20,000 be put back into the economic development budget for the beautification cost-sharing program funded from the tax levy. This was polled, so does anyone have any questions? Seeing no, go, go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
Sorry, I was trying to read and just remind myself what it was about. So to administration, it looks, you said that this doesn't have a very high uptake? Like, how, what kind of an uptake are we looking at here for this program?
Through the chair, we've seen an average of 12 applications per year over the last five years. Amounting to about.
Mike, I can't really hear you.
If you're now at the headset.
Yeah, let's go again.
Okay, sorry about that. We've had an average of 12 applications per year over the last five years. And about 11,000 of the, the 20,000 allocated has been used or spent on average over the last five years.
When I read the backgrounder, it says that the business, when you talk about business resiliency, they're more concerned about support, about marketing it online than having the flowers be their primary, be one of their major support issues, right?
Correct, that's what we heard from the businesses through the, the Business Resiliency Survey earlier this, earlier in this year.
I have not been spending the majority of the money with, well, you spend an average of 11,000 out of the 12, 20. So really, if we were to fund anything, it wouldn't need to exceed 12, 11,000 dollars. Right?
Based on what we've seen over the last five years, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any more questions? All right. My comments on this one are, a lot of this is uptake by the downtown businesses, and I actually met with the Chamber of Commerce yesterday to talk about how to work on the downtown and, what is Shelley's position? Their C, CEO has been going, what is it? President? Or is that the Shelley nickel? She said she was going, she's been actually going door-to-door in the downtown, talking to businesses, and they're a little fearful that this program will be pulled away from them because they do enjoy it. And I think as we try to focus some efforts into the renewal of the downtown business core, programs such as this are, are a good show of support from the municipality and indication that we want to help them. We need our downtown to be attractive, to bring people down to it, and needs to be not just, you know, pretty flowers. It needs to, you know, be walkable and have, have all those outdoor patios, et cetera. But, you know, this is one small program at a, you know, 20,000 in the motion, but you know, maybe 11,000 really. Excuse me. I, I just really want to make sure this one is continued and start to introduce even more programs into the downtown to incentivize people to come down and to help businesses. And of course, this is not just free money to them. They're putting up, it's a cost. They have to match the dollars, so nothing further. Go ahead, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. Mayor Hearn, would you consider changing it from 12 to 11 at least? In the event this passes? Or do you want to keep it, or start from 20 to 11, since 11 is all the?
Let's just keep it at 20, because if it doesn't get spent, of course, it goes into the surplus at the end of year. And if we, if we want to have it, then it's there, so.
Okay.
We're talking $9,000 in a $160 million budget.
Yeah, I know that, but we also looking at substantial tax increases that are going up with almost every single motion. So personally, I'm gonna be voting against this because it's been very clear this is not gonna be the fundamental change for people to, whether or not they're going to be viable. It's had very low uptake. And I, I think that the businesses that are taking it would still do something there, because they are doing cost sharing. They would still do something in front of their own businesses. So, and also, I, I'm uncomfortable about even putting an extra $9,000 into a program that clearly has never used up the full funding ever since its existence. So I realize that this may be a difficult thing for council, but we're facing a situation where we have, our, our, I don't know what the tax meter's at, but it's gonna go up. And so that means that even $20,000 needs to be reconsidered as whether or not this is a want or a need. And I think this is more of a want and not even by that many businesses.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, call for the vote. Counselor Broadhead? Didn't get yours. That's right. That motion passes with Counselor Hughes opposed. 12, the feasibility study to convert fire station was polled, and then the decommissioning motion, PM 037, was polled. So now we are on to PM 013, which is a municipal naming moved by Counselor Jolly.
Sorry, I'm just waiting for it to come up here. That municipal naming be funded for 325,000 from the stabilization reserve.
All right, any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Broadhead.
Yeah, just what's the balance of the stabilization reserve? I don't need an exact number. I'm just, is there sufficient funds to cover this?
So currently, after the, the two and a half million that we're recommending we use towards the 22 budget to help offset taxes, there's about 4 million in the right.
Thank you.
That's the only question you had? All right, seeing no more. Counselor Jolly, I'll let you go into your opening comments.
Thank you. So I'm gonna split my, my comments into two sections. So we really have the policy, so the naming policy going forward, and then the engagement kind of reflecting on existing names. So on the, the policy, the reason that this is important is that I do not want to see us repeat, repeat the mistakes of yesterday tomorrow. So we've seen the cost of our current policy in terms of staff time, overwhelming demand on staff time, as we saw this past summer. Frustration and anger and sadness of residents and, and to our reputation. So this is really an opportunity to reflect our values as a municipality in the naming policy, and that's going to ultimately reduce our costs in the future. And, and that's really why we have to move forward to rewrite the, the, the policy as soon as possible. So on the engagement, the motion is intended to be inclusive of not only reconciliation, but also our commitment to all aspects of inclusion, which is why this project isn't a simple name replacement. It's not just, let's rename the Grandin neighborhood or whatnot, what have you. That said, I'll focus on reconciliation and the, and the Grandin name because of the, the response we heard from residents about naming after Kamloops. St. Albert Catholic Schools have already renamed Grandin School, so we're already moving more cautiously than, than community partners who also understand ongoing harm caused by this name. And I think everyone knows, but the, the comment by Vitale Grandin that, that we've all heard about residential schools is that we instill, instill in them a pronounced distaste for the native life so that they will be humiliated when reminded of their origin. When they graduate from our institutions, the children have lost everything native except their blood. So not only does the harm caused by Grandin not reflect the, the values of St. Albert, but it continues to cause harm as we celebrate Grandin through using his name on St. Albert assets. So I, I don't know how many other names risk causing continual harm. This is kind of a, a really obvious one. And I don't know how to best address that harm, and this project would help us answer those questions. And that is the reason that I've, I've brought it forward. That's all. Thank you.
All right, anyone else on debate? Seeing not very many. Thought this would be a debatable one. Counselor, oh, go ahead, Counselor Bermanzki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions on this one, like, $325,000 is a lot of money. And, you know, it's been mentioned, you know, in our Indigenous healing and such. We have programs, we're going into a new program with Indigenous healing. Can that not be, can this not be blended in that program somehow? Like, or are you talking about, you know, renaming for many different reasons? Because you've mentioned a couple Indigenous-related, but I mean, there's other reasons why people are renaming. So I'm not sure which direction the 325,000 is, is planned for. Exactly.
Yeah, I, less you want. Sorry, I can comment on that. So this is not directing renaming of anything. What it's asking is how do we deal with these names and what are the names that are problematic? Grandin is an easy one because it's, it's been in the news so much in the last year. But also, and you know, this particular one, I, I doesn't, I found it really interesting this weekend in the Gazette. There was the, the great article on historical names. I, I learned that Lucie Boudreau was the only MLE in Alberta to vote against giving the vote to women. So I found that really interesting. And I don't, that particular one, I'm, it doesn't upset me, but it's something that we could consider as, is this a problem? If it's not, maybe it's an opportunity to, to allow for education in the community, saying, hey, this is really, this is part of our history, and this is what happened. And so it's not directing changing of names. It's just looking at names in the context of our, our values. And that might be in terms of, you know, the sexism, which I just addressed, but, but also in terms of inclusion in any sense. So whether it's historical names that were really involved in eugenics, whatever it happens to be. So it's not directing that we change the name. It's asking the question of how do we address these, these names?
My only concern is that, you know, sometimes when you start a, a program like this, there's people that start looking for reasons to rename things, you know, and it can be a contentious issue between individuals that don't agree on things, right? Like, what, what one person feels, you know, is offensive to themselves may be different to someone else. And then you're in a battle constantly of, of, of settling the debate between each renaming, so to speak. So I just think that there could be a lot of public, I guess, public discourse through it somewhat. Just a thought.
All right, in my comments, so I'll support this, Counselor Jolly. It's not easy work that, that, and that's why, probably why the price tag is high. But just yesterday, um I, I'm taking the U of A's Indigenous Canada course, but I'm doing it with the library because they have a learning circle. And so we, I brought this up at the learning circle last night. And you, you know, you've got twelve or so people there that have been taking the course and really doing their best to educate themselves. And they couldn't find a solution to this problem. It's not problem, but this issue. So um, with, with regards to the policy, probably the best thing ever to do would be to rip up the list, list of names. Um, not because those people on, on that list aren't deserving. But um, I'm sure if you had asked people in nineteen or eighteen eighty or nineteen ten, if Grandin was deserving, they would have said yes. So it's, it's not about that. It's about how we, oh, times change and perceptions change and morals and ethics and everything um evolves. And so I would rather see things named after animals and flowers and whatever. I, I live on an otter crescent. That one will never be offensive because they're cute. So I think that policy change is, is really key. But um, that was that, that looks at going forward. We need to also adjust some of the, the names that we have in the community. Um, I'd like to see our municipal assets, Grandin Clubhouse, Grandin Pond, um changed quick. I think we could probably tackle that one, but the, the neighborhood and the street names that people live on that affects their lives significantly. We need to have that community engagement. So I will be, it's the right thing to do. I'll be supporting this. Anything to close? All right, call, oh, Council Hughes. Sorry, I have the participants sing and I don't see your hand, but then I look up on the screen and I can see you like waving. Go ahead.
Um, you know, I'm really not sure what to do on this because um, I don't have a problem updating the policy to determine it. But you know, the unintended consequences of talking about changing neighborhoods and streets where people have official documents, all their official documents are on that street, for example. And suddenly now they have to change their driver's license, their passports. There's just endless documents now need to be changed if we choose to change, rename a street. And so this is a dangerous path to be going down in that where the consequences of this could cost many people a lot of money as they have to rename everything. And perhaps you're not offended by Boudreaux, but knowing other people that don't appreciate the fact that they didn't treat women as people for the endless time may be offended by Boudreaux. And so now we're just, you know, one, as Council Bermansky said, what one person may find offensive, the next person may not. And so where will the line of the sand be? Um, before everything's being considered offensive and we're changing a lot of neighborhoods or streets um that will affect a lot of people trying to rejig every piece of documentation that they have about that. So this is my problem is that we have a, two parts to this. The first part, I think, makes sense. The second part, um, I think it's, the consequences of changing it, I think, will be dramatic. And um, and it, and then it comes back to exactly who has to be offended for it to be considered a rename. Um, whose vote is more important, the person who has it or the person who isn't? And if it's the person who is, ultimately, almost every street could almost get renamed if he so chose. Um, so I don't know where to go on this one, but it's, we have to look at the unintended consequences of having it if me- because it says if neighborhoods and streets are currently named after controversial historic figures should be renamed. And it's one thing about hacking the city buildings. We don't need to have public engagement on that extensively. But it's another thing altogether about uh changing people's addresses. I don't know.
All right, now you wanted to say a few things to close?
Yeah, just to, to close really quick, I want to make it really clear that there's nothing in this mo- motion that's presupposing an outcome. So renaming streets is uh, I, I think n- not in this motion. So I think the questions, Council Hughes, that you're asking are really important ones. You know, how do we address Grandin Road that has municipal addresses on that? And that's a really important question. And um m- my understanding is those are the questions that are going to be asked and discussed um through this process. So really important questions. Thank you. That's all I have.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That uh passes by majority with Council Bermansky opposed. Okay, we are on to the municipal energy specialist moved by Council Jolly.
Thank you, just waiting for that. That municipal energy specialist be funded for a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars from the tax levy and be added as a permanent service level.
Any questions on this one? Council Jolly has a question, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the, the dollar figure in here. Right now, it looks like this position is funded to the end of um twenty twenty two. Is that accurate?
Carrie, jumping in?
I, I thought Ryan might have been there. So through the chair to Council Jolly, uh, yes, it's funded to the end of the year.
And, and this year or next year?
This year, twenty twenty one, sorry.
Twenty twenty one?
Yes, okay. This year, sorry.
So not to the end of twenty twenty two?
No, just to the end of this year.
Okay, great. That was my only question.
Okay. Council McKay.
Yeah, uh, following up on that though, you, uh, there were plans in place to reinvest opera- current operating savings just to extend it to twenty twenty two though, right? So I mean, and it's kind of like, I mean, it's obviously seen as being important in the sense that we're trying to find funding temporary, but this motion means making it permanent.
Um, I'll let Diane McMarty, oh, Ryan's on now.
Yeah, uh, Council McKay, that's correct. Um, we, the business case speaks for itself on this one. We just want to make it permanent.
But um, I mean, right now, I mean, it's looking like you want to attempt, you can, you can temporarily fund it with operational savings until the end of twenty twenty two. Um, potentially, there could be other sources of, or we could be having this discussion next year in relation to moving it forward, right?
I, I mean, this position is found uh and implemented a hundred and eighty thousand in savings uh in perpetuity for, until the life of project life. And we have about that much more to pursue that we could get from this role. Our, our fear is that if we keep the temporary or term approach, people will turn over and we can't implement effectively where the permanency does get us there.
All right, I, I appreciate that candor then because I was thinking that if we could carry it over and maybe, maybe that individual might actually find savings enough that they can fund their own job.
They did fund, they found more than their own job and they can continue to find more.
It would be a great incentive program.
Council Broadhead, question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, through you, Mr. Stovall. Uh, so there's, there's this uh statement in here that says uh operational savings has been re-in- uh reinvested. I think this or Council McKay was going. Uh, if, should council wish to move forward to approving this F T E, city administration recommends the operational savings identified be redirected towards this F T E in order to have no impact on the municipal tax rate. It, do you see that in the motion? Maybe this is a question too. I don't, I don't know who, maybe you.
No, I don't see that in the motion. I'd, I'd be open to a friendly amendment. I don't quite understand that, that recommendation.
I, I'm just referring to your report there, Ryan.
So, so the recommendation um talks about putting it to the tax levy. The, the saving, it's kind of hard to explain here. The savings will come against the tax levy anyway because we've already found a hundred and eighty thousand in savings. And we're saying fund this from the tax levy. So it's a wash. You could cancel them out? Or you speak, and I see Diane's going to correct me here in two seconds.
I, I just want to make sure that we capture that.
Um, yeah, so, so what we're, what we're actually proposing to do is that what we're saying is we can actually fund this internally within our own budget. And we actually don't particularly need this motion. But in order to do that, we're doing something a little bit differently than we've ever done in the past. So typically, when we have energy savings from a, from, especially from a bigger project, and, and for this one, it's mostly the, the solar panels at Service Place. We, we typically don't build it into the savings or in the savings into the budget until we've actually sort of had a year of history, I guess, um, before we actually reduce the budget. And so what we're proposing to do a little bit differently this year, and I think it's something we need to look at in terms of our energy efficiency projects as well, is why are we necessarily having to wait a whole year before we can capture those savings? And so what we thought we would do with this one to be conservative um with the estimated savings of what the solar panels are going to save in twenty twenty two, it more than like, like that one position, it is not even going to utilize half of it. So even if we didn't achieve the full, full savings that we were anticipating, we will have more than enough to cover this position on an ongoing basis. So it's allowing us to capture those savings a year earlier um and reinvest them um than we've ever, than we've done in the past. So it's a bit of a change in process, but it, it kind of makes sense. And I think we need to look at it at a more holistic level as well.
So do you need the motion?
That's what we're saying is we actually don't. We can, we could, we could, if, if council is in agreement that we capture.
Oh, go ahead, Ryan.
We need something because we need this to become a permanent service level. If we don't get the permanent F T E, I have a real problem again. So.
So, so yeah, so sorry, I will add to that, Ryan. Right. So what we do need is approval for an F T E because council of course has to approve our F T E count and we don't have an F T E.
Okay, so.
We have the money, but we don't have the F T E.
I'm just wondering, can we take out the dollar amount in this motion then? Just say that the municipal energy specialist become a permanent F T E.
Madam Mayor, there's a recommendation from administration as to a motion.
Where?
In the middle of uh background or that the City of St. Albert F T E base be increased by one to support the permanent appointment of the specialist effective January one, by, uh, funding would come to reallocation of operating.
Do you have that, Tamara? I'm going to put it into the chat. And you can quickly then cut and paste it. Thank you, Diane.
That's a good one.
There, it's in the chat now. Of course. So that's the motion you want to move. Okay.
I don't see it, but that sounded great.
No, that's okay. Yeah. Why don't you read it into the record? So the public, it's in the.
It's on page two oh one. It's on page two oh one of the whole pack. Uh, page two oh one. All right.
Okay, we can wait. There, it's on the screen now.
That the City of St. Albert F T E base be increased by one to support the permanent appointment of a municipal energy specialist effective January one, twenty twenty two. Funding for the position will be through the real allocation of operating savings.
Awesome. Okay. Is there any more questions? All right. Council Jolly, I'll let you start your opening comments.
So this might be my favorite budget motion ever. So this is an increase in service levels in an area that is dear to my heart and, and important in terms of my values. Um, and I think the city's values. And it pays for itself. So I recommend uh everyone supporting this motion. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council McKay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to, I'm, I don't have anything more and actually to add to the actual debate, but I just want to uh congratulate administration in relation to identifying an alternative and, and actually looking at, and, and I'm not, I, I don't want to say thinking outside the box, but I guess that's exactly what they've done on this because they've identified a way to uh deliver uh something that's already been identified as something very important and has identified numerous efficiencies and paid for itself and, and um administration's brought forward a solution that, that actually makes it easy to add a position and not increase tax.
Those are going to be my comments. Council McKay, I mean, this is a fantastic motion. And honestly, you know, it showed up on our b- municipal business cases that were not funded, so not recommended to go forward. You picked it out as a priority and you're willing to fund it. And then Diane and her team, thank you for that. I think this is a great solution. So I will support it. Anything to close, Council Jolly?
You know what? I've, I've told Diane all along that she's smarter than everyone else. Delighted to see this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, procurement audit recommendations. This is you, Council Hughes. I'll get you to read.
Can we change? Can we change it from capital budget to stabilization? And I'll just read it. That the financial services information technology procurement audit recommendation for a hundred and two thousand is funded for twenty twenty two from the stabilization budget.
Okay, um, while that's getting, oh, it's already up there. Okay, any questions on this motion? See, oh, go ahead, Council Jolly.
Thank you. So just reading through the background or it looks like this work is already underway. And so I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of what this funding would do if, if some clarity could be given.
So out of the M M P internal audit that we had a while ago, we, they came up with uh twenty recommendations with about thirty sub recommendations underneath them. Um, you know, as we started scoping out the work on it, we knew it was probably going to be a three to four year project. Um, we were able to um through the vacancy pool that we've had, we were able to use um some of that money on a temporary basis to hire an additional person to help. Um, we only have three procurement people um on my team and they're, they're pretty full out just actually doing procurements for the city. Um, so we needed that extra help. And so the, basically the funding for that temporary position expires at the end of this year. So we'll be back out to just our regular staff. And uh, so you know, audit recommendations would still progress, but just at a much slower pace.
Great, thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions, I will go to you, Council Hughes, for opening comments.
Thank you. So by, this is a one year solution. It's not an ongoing. We're not increasing the F T E pool. Um, and going from stabilization or the capital is not going to increase the taxes. But what we, we did invest substantial amount of money, getting the audit, internal audit done. We came back with really good recommendation. Administration has every intention of trying to accomplish them. But we're only partway there. And if we just don't let this finish, we're just going to let a lot of things fall under the dust. And the recommendations helped with efficiencies. They help with cost savings. They help to make sure that the accounting is easier. Um, there's a lot of things that uh they brought forward that would help not only with just overall tax um effects, but also just help the organization run more efficiently. And I don't want to see it come to a snail's pace because the staff don't have the help that they need just to get these things implemented. So that is why I'm suggesting that or recommending or hoping that we can uh finish with the recommendations that were brought forward, the audit, so that we take advantage of the full value of the investment that we put forward.
All right, anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Uh, artist mentorship program subsidy passed on consent. The motion was that the artist mentorship program subsidy for ten thousand dollars be discontinued and the savings is applied to reduce the tax base. Uh, okay. Uh, Council Hughes, part time position in finance.
Yes, the part time position for finance one is funded for thirty nine thousand dollars, funded from tax base.
Awesome. Any questions on this one, Council Jolly?
Thank you. Um, so the front desk staff, what are their, what are, what is their job when there's not a member of the public that's come to that desk? Like, what are they working on?
Um, so our, so our main full time cashier actually does a lot of work with our accounts receivable um and supports that team. So they're, they're, they're very busy. Even when, even when there's not people um at the front with other, with other tasks. Um, but the, the part time position is, is really foc- is mostly focused on, on serving the people that have walked in the door. And uh, you know, as I kind of said in my background or it's uh, it's, it's changed drastically over the last, last couple of years in terms of the type traffic and the types of reasons people are coming in. Um, but the reason that we had to propose a um, a time change to how, to how finance one would operate is to be able to name Um, but the reason that we had to propose a, um, a time change to how, to how finance one would operate is to be able to name coverage. Um, for lunches and RDOs and all of that without that, um, without that extra position. We, we, that's the only way we can do it would be to shorten, shorten the hours. But the new proposed hours do cover 80 to 90% of when people are coming in anyways.
Okay, thank you. So on that, so it, it sounds like. The staff are busy. So is there any value in reducing the hours kind of as is proposed, but keeping that position? Like, would that be something that's helpful?
No, not, I wouldn't say really, because really that extra position is really focused on the, on the people more so that are coming in.
Okay.
Um, the, the other cashier has a bit of a different role and takes on some of the accounts receivable and those as well. She just physically does it from the front, but she could, she could just. She'd be sitting, um, away from the front counter to do that as well.
Okay, and. I guess I understand that the, the names of the roles are different, but. I guess what, what's keeping us from moving that front desk service to Service Place or Fountain Park where they're already selling garbage tags and they have. Much longer hours than St. Albert Place.
I think probably one of the big restrictions would probably be on the IT side is that we, um, we use our tempus, um, system for all of our accounts receivable and stuff and they don't operate that system at Service Place. So it would be a whole new set of technology for the people over there.
Okay.
And they do already sell, I think, at Service Place, some of the things that we sell at Finance One. I think they also sell at Service Place. I'm not sure how that all works. There's a few, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions? Seeing none, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think that first of all, when we're looking at doing budget cuts, we should not be looking at removing frontline services. And reducing the services between tab from eight to five to 10 to three doesn't actually reflect what everything is that those people in the front actually do. Um, for one, the, um, there's just so much that they do. And I asked for a list, actually, um, to have an idea. When couriers come in and out, they're the ones assigned for packages. When the loading dock has anything, they're the ones who have to handle this. The security group for accepting coin orders from C departments. Going back and forth, they handle that. Um, they handle all of the walk-in payments, which is what is currently being mentioned in the background or is the walk-ins. But that's also being discussed as walk-ins during a pandemic where half the staff are not even in the office. So we have to assume at some point that we are going to go back to regular usage of St. Albert Place and the numbers are going to climb substantially. And so saying here's our numbers when we're closed is not indication of what happens when we're open. Um, all of the tax payments that come in that are due for June, they go through that office. Uh, they handle all the sales orders. They provide backup for the tax department and, um, the business and the taxes. They go back and forth constantly. And are doing the bookkeeping on that to help them with that. So they do a summary of all the cash that's going forward, all debit reports, checking reports. All of that is going through that one center. Um, they also receive the library and cash bank deposits. And they, uh, also, they are the, they are the front face for anybody who says they'll go there and they'll say, I'm looking for this office. And they'll go to the information because that's the information desk. And then they will go there. Now, obviously, when all the offices are closed, you're not going to see those numbers, but when the offices are open, you are going to see much higher numbers. So this, and so this needs to be open when St. Albert Place office hours is open. It does should not be open 10 to three because the loading dock and other cash services are going to be happening outside of those hours. And so we cannot expect everyone to compress it down there so that we can save $39,000. Really, that one area becomes the front face for St. Albert Place because anybody who has any questions quickly goes there. And all the money is transferring back and forth through there, which is also great that they have that security Plex shield because. They need that really, when you consider how much cash can be flowing through that area. So I don't think that, um, reducing the hours is going to serve our public well. It's not going to serve the staff well. And then expecting people who are over in tax one to have to juggle back and forth so that that one person gets break all the time. Meanwhile, those people are not necessarily trained in this particular position. Every time that they're doing a cover off and they're not doing their job while they have to knock the cover off of this other person's job. Doesn't seem like an efficient use of time or resources. So while I understand that obviously budget's always a concern, I don't think that, um, moving this service down to reduced hours. Is actually going to be a savings that we want. To me, it's sort of like saying you want to lose weight and cutting off your left foot. It's not going to be beneficial in the end. And I think that this is an investment in allowing people to have the services they're expecting. And also to make sure that the cash, et cetera, is moving forward. And. The last thing I want is somebody to come to the loading dock at 8:30 and they have to be having, get there and there's nobody at the office to actually let them in, let the services come in and the. They go back and they come back, they go back and forth. You're not going to get what you want when you want it. So, um, this is not just above the number of walk-ins that come in when we're closed for a pandemic. This, this department is under recognized for what they're actually providing as a service to the public and as a service to back up the other departments within our city.
Council Jolly. Thank you. Um, you know, our, our administration is always under pressure to find. Um, efficiencies and find those efficiencies based on changes in demands that we see. Um, and you've done with this, that, with this recommendation. I found it really interesting that, um, on those off hours that we're looking to cut, there's an average of less than three people per hour. Kind of requiring services, um, compared with 15, more, more than 15 people per hour in those, those core middle of the day hours. So. That to me says that, that really you've done your due diligence and you're making a great recommendation based on changes that we've seen over time. Um, I already also really love the, the information that showed that almost 60% of the questions were about wayfinding. Um, I had a great discussion with Peter Bailey about this, saying, you know what, we, we've always done those wayfinding questions. Outside of, of hours where there's someone sitting at that desk, they're open on weekends, they're open on evenings. And, and he says he's happy to discuss with the city any kind of, you know, help that they need with that. We have a great relationship. Um, only 20% of the, um, the, the people coming to the desk are looking to, to make payments. Um, I've, I've, I don't know that I've ever made a, a payment there. Because there are other options and, you know, people more and more are becoming comfortable with those, those alternative options and. As the needs of our community changes, uh, we, we have to adjust the service levels. Same thing, you know, garbage tags, it's really low. I can go to Fountain Park and pick up garbage, garbage tags. And then dog licenses and bus passes are, are again, very, very small and, and bus passes can be done, done other places as well. So, um, I, I won't be supporting this motion and, and I really applaud administration for recognizing that we have to change our services based on changing needs. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
When I read the background for this one. Anyone else wants to speak? Sorry. It's, it said that. You were noticing the decline in people access this thing even before COVID. So this is, this is not a COVID. These numbers aren't just low because of COVID. It was going down before. And I think COVID. Post-COVID world. It'll be even less because people have adapted to the online, um, in the digital world. And I just want to read you one of the recommendations coming out of the recovery task force. It says streamlining, adapting business service delivery. More online and e-commerce. That was a recommendation right out of our committee. So that's what residents are starting to embrace. And, um, when we. Are pressuring as a council, Mr. Scoble to find savings, $39,000 for a reduction of a few hours at, at the desk, I think is. Is a good recommendation coming from, from the staff. So I will be. Um, opposed to reintroducing this back in and I applaud you for trying to find those savings and, um, those hours that aren't covered now. When there's deliveries and stuff, we'll find, we'll find solutions for that. It's not, not a big deal. So. Anything to close, Council Hughes?
Yes, this is, the background did not reflect what is actually involved in the front desk. The simplest. The background talks about payment and garbage tags.
Madam Mayor, this is a governance issue and this is a personnel matter. Like this is under the purview of the CAO, not determining job functions and tasks of an employee.
Okay, I'm not talking about job functions and tasks. I'm talking about the value that has been provided and background doesn't reflect their value. I think that the, the value is past garbage tags and dog licenses. The, the value is all the other support they provide to all of the departments. And the money that's flowing in and out of there that they're keeping track of and allowing other departments to actually not have to worry about that. And so I'm just. If we're prepared to put $20,000 to help people pay for flowers on the street, I think that we should put the $39,000 back. To allow people to access the finance one, which is just beyond people who are going for garbage tags and dog licenses. But go for everyone and recognize that the numbers are down. Because the numbers that we're giving us, it don't reflect pre-pandemic. So I don't have those pre-pandemic. All I have is pandemic numbers. And we have to recognize that we're going to come out of it and there's going to be more demands than what I have for actual people coming down to see them. But that their job function is not specific to that. It's much more broad than that. It's much more involved. It's not just about opening a door for a courier. It's a lot more involved than that. And I think that we're not serving the public properly if we simply say we're going to cut back that hours to 10 to three. And the fact that we're saying there's three people during a pandemic in off hours, this could be three crucial things that are happening during those. We don't know what the three are. And if the three are, if we're only counting the three that happen to be for, uh. Like bus passes, then that's not what we actually should be looking at. I don't know if this is including how many staff people came to drop things off or anything else that came through there, but. This is a department that is available for information while it's not place is operational for business and those hours should reflect that. That's it.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion fails with Council Bromansky, Broadhead and Hughes in favor. All right, internal auditor contracts, which is postponed motion zero 21. Council Hughes, that one is yours.
That the internal audit contracts are funded for a total of 350,000 capital reserve.
All right, any questions on this one? Sorry. Council Jolly.
Thank you. Um, so Council Hughes, on the funding source, is it your intention to change that to stabilization reserve?
Oh, sorry. Yes. Thank you for that. But can we change it to stabilization reserve? Thank you for that catch.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any more questions? Seeing no question. Oh, Council Broadhead, go ahead.
I. You know, we've gone through just a question. What's, uh? What are you envisioning, uh, in terms of the scope of work for this money? Only because we've gone through a number of them and we haven't implemented what we've got yet. So I'm open to this. I just need to hear what your vision is going forward.
Sure. So we have an audit committee, as you're well aware, you're a member of it at the time, uh, Council Broadhead. Um, and I just would like to see the opportunity to do. One to two more audits, I think probably be all of that money would do, um, over the next, over this next term. And to have the audit committee and administration work together to figure out where would be the best place to do the next actual internal audit. The other reviews are not the same as the internal audits. They don't go to the same level of depth. That the internal audit provided. And our first one for the procurement and risk assessment has provided. 50 recommendations in total between majors and minors of how we can, um, work more efficiently as a city. That we're currently implementing, which will only make our city stronger. So I've seen the value that the internal auditor can provide. And, um, so what we'd have to do is figure out based on what administration recommends and what the committee decides. Um, to recommend to council would be the next location. So. Depending on what it is, I mean, it could be a larger one, which uses up the whole money, or it could be a series of smaller ones that, um. Can also find the benefit. But what I've seen is that they do provide value. So I don't have a particular department in mind. I just, I know that there's, um, much that we can do to improve the, the, um. Improve the city, but really we need to have that deep dive to be able to just facilitate that. And, um, the last internal audit had, I know I'm probably just doing debate right now, but the last internal audit had a similar budget. Um, and less than half of it was actually used towards internal auditing before the rest was transferred over. So I just thought we, that would cover us definitely for the rest of this term. Yes.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. So to administration, um, so just to, to make sure that I understand the background or we have the capacity, like the internal resources to either work on implementation of the past recommendations. Or. Uh, kind of being involved in new audits, but not both. So if, if this motion passes, that means we won't have time to work on. Any of the existing recommendations. Did I understand that correctly?
Um, I can answer that through you, Mayor, to Council Jolly. That is correct. Our internal resources, our, our staff time and, and power is, uh, is, is stretched with the, with implementing. The results of the, of the recommendations of the, of the current audits. Uh, adding more audits will mean, uh, that we would have to do, uh, a, a priority list and, and figure out what work we can do and, and what work we, we don't have further capacity to, to do.
Okay, thank you.
Council Mackay.
Uh, clarification to Council Hughes, um, just in relation to the $350,000, you're, you're saying over the next term, is that your expectation that these audits would, they wouldn't necessarily come. Like next year, they would come throughout the next four years?
Yeah. Like I, instead of funding it every year, especially because I don't, the reason I put the 350 was I don't know how much the next audit is going to come in at. So I don't know what the recommendation will be and what the scope will ultimately become, right? But the intention is that. I mean, I hope we can get at least a couple of them accomplished in there, but it's, it's not per year. I'm not expecting this to happen this year. And, um, also just as I've been on the committee for a while, it's a slow moving process. Um, between you meeting and then you come up with who, what recommendation is, and that goes to council and then there's the RFP and then that goes out and then there's a selection and then they begin. So even if this was fast trend, I wouldn't actually expect an audit to begin until September of next year. You have 2022. That'll probably be early. Just based on the speed of which everything happens in the past. And it could even be beyond that. So. I'm really not thinking that an audit's going to happen until late of next year. Um, and potentially into point 23 before it actually manifests itself. And then after that, the recommendations would be three to six months later. And then after that, it would be ultimately up to administration as to which and how fast the recommendations were implemented. So, um, the recommendations of the current. Um, audit are hopefully going to be mostly finished by, um, 2022. And it, and then ideally then the next audit could continue and then. Be implemented after the first set of audits has been completed. So this is not to spend and do $350,000 worth of it, you know, in March. And quite frankly, I think it'd be impossible to do just with the timelines of how everything works.
Thank you. Uh, the 350,000 was, did that come from a specific place or is that what your experience tells you it's worth?
Came from my brain. Um, so the, the reason why is that I just looked at how much we spent in the last one. And then I basically doubled it-ish, um, to allow it so that ultimately if we were to do one of a similar scope of what happened last time, we could do two. But again, it would be two over the course of several years.
Thank you.
Another question from Council Jolly.
Thank you. This is for Council Hughes. So. So you're not in a rush to actually have audits done and administrations told us that this is an either or scenario. So we can either implement or. We can start work on new audits. Would you consider delaying this until like putting this in for a postponed motion for, for the 2023 budget?
Um. I can, if it fails, I'll put it in for 2023 as well, I guess is what I'd say. But the reality is that. I doubt that any of the recommendations from this audit, or even if the audit will be completed, it's not about not wanting it to be done sooner. It's about the fact that. The process is that slow between the committee and the RFPs and getting the selection. And it's not just simply going to administration, putting on RFP and then finishing it six weeks later. It's a slower process because there is a committee involved, which takes that step away from administration. So starting it now will get it to go actually probably manifest in 2023, not because I want it to, but because that's just the reality of it. So I don't think it has to be an either or. I think that, um, and the thing too is that the audit committee discusses with administration. I think that, um, and the thing too is that the audit committee discusses with administration where they think that there could be a good spot for an audit. So all of the things, including current workload, et cetera, from various departments is considered. You know, like procurement and finance might be busy right now because of the recommendations, but the next audit, I probably will not be there. So it's a different staff load. So all those things I think need to be taken into consideration, but I'd like to have the money there so we can have this discussion, figure out when we can actually move it forward. If we say we're going to put for 2023, it's probably not going to start at 2024. So, um, I just, you know, that, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's not that I want it to be slower. It's just that I've just, I've been in the reality.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, I see no more questions. Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Okay, I have nothing left to say. I think I've answered everybody's questions in the longest way possible. So other than, I think that this is a value. I think it's shown its value. Um, yes, it's always a stressor to have it done. Um, obviously administration, it's, it's always a stressor if somebody's going to do an audit on you. Um, I think the last audit, I think Council Broadhead, you were there when they gave the results. It was a very positive experience. They were like, here's your weaknesses. This is what we recommend you do better. Administration has taken those unto heart and have, have only improved the organization furthermore. So to me, this is really not as much of an expense, it's an investment, both in reducing the tax bases, but also in finding efficiencies that administration has the opportunity to work better. Um, you know, it's like work smarter, not harder. And that's what this allows us to do. That's it.
Council Jolly?
Thank you. Very briefly, so when administration tells us that it's either or, I trust them. My priority is to give admin time to, uh, implement recommendations from previous audits. Um, so I'm, I'm not opposed to considering this next year, but I, I, I trust that what admin has provided to us is, is accurate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else on debate? Uh, Council Hughes, my thoughts on this are a little early. I want to, during our strategic planning in February, we're going to talk about the Ernst &amp; Young report and, and identify what we should work on there. We also, we have recommendations coming out of other audits that we need to work on. And to Council Broadhead's question about what's the scope, and, um, that's a good conversation that the internal audit committee should be having. And so kind of horse, cart before the horse in this motion. So, um, I think we should try to check off some of the stuff that we've done in the last term, um, before we embark on something new. So I would have liked to postpone until next, uh, budget, but if this fails, I'd hope you do bring it back. You can close.
Uh, great. First of all, uh, the either or, I think, would really be an interpretation of doing it at the same time. And, um, as I said, I doubt that this will be occurring at the same time, just because of the delay. And this is about just putting money aside to have it happen. When council meets and discusses its priorities and discusses the, uh, review in detail, that will actually probably allow us to have a trigger to know where to put that money. Um, and have that whole discussion with administration. This is about just saying that we're going to set this money aside with the intention of using it when the time comes and hopefully that time will get started sometime in 2022. It took almost a year and a half for the first audit to get completed. So delaying it by an extra year just delays it that much more. And considering that we do have that review coming up for discussion, and that would give us an opportunity to have further discussions about, uh, just more in-depth. Uh, I think that that's, putting the money aside makes sense. But, you know, we'll see how the vote goes.
Okay, call for the vote? Got them all. Voting's closed. That motion passes with Council Jolly and Mayor Herr in oppose. All right, it, it's almost seven, guys. I'm going to call a break now. Um, we've got, we're not going to get it done tonight, so we might as well let our brains rest, because I'm getting a little tired and not thinking. So do you want to pull up the tax meter? Is it, is it available? Okay. Can't really see it. There we go. So we're at two point eight? Okay, all right. Not surprising. All right. So we will reconvene on Tuesday, December seventh at two o'clock right here, and we'll finish this off. Okay, good night, everyone. Unless you have f- further questions? Nope. Okay, good night.